All right, being seven o'clock, we'll call the Coos Bay City Council meeting to order.
Would you all rise and join me in the pleasantries?
Can you leave us on this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and free of any injustice.
Okay, so, the first item is public comments, and so I'll explain how this is gonna go this evening. But first of all, I want Deputy Chief Chapinar to give us a report on what's been happening, and then after he gets done with his report, we'll go into public comments, and I'll explain the process on that at that time. Chief, or W. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening. So, yeah, I wanted to provide a report on, uh, just a note, an alternative of cases that we've been working on, particularly the incident that occurred in Empire District on the 23rd of June, that, um, transpired a video that, uh, that was released on the 27th. Uh, I wanted to, uh, report that that, uh, investigation has been completed.
Can you pull the mic down, W. Chief, so we can hear you?
There you go.
Is that any better?
Yeah, much better.
Okay, that, uh, report has, uh, or that, uh, case has been investigated, um, and it has been forwarded over to the District Attorney's Office, pending their review of, um, charges, so...
Do we know where it's gonna go from there? At this, at this time, I mean, is it going to, uh, are they gonna move forward on it, or are they gonna dismiss it?
I, I'm not sure on that right at this point. Um, it's been forwarded over to their review, so they'll review it, um, and, uh, decide whether or not they're going to pursue charges.
So, do we, the city of Coos Bay and the Police Department, have anything further to do with this, except if it goes to court and we testify and give reports?
Yes, unless they, uh, review it and they want some follow-up, uh, information, or some additional person contacted, interviewed, whatnot, but, uh, generally when, uh, we are done with an investigation, we send it over to the DA's office. Um, the, the next thing that the Police Department would do is, is a testimony in a trial.
Okay, if it goes to court.
Or grand jury, um, appearance.
So that'll be determined by the DA's office, not us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The, the next thing is, is the graffiti, um, uh, we had a couple different incidences of graffiti out in the Empire District. Um, uh, the one in particular that occurred on, uh, July 15th, um, it was on a, a fence, uh, we, we, um, the, the city offered, we opened a tip line, the city, uh, Coos Bay offered a, a reward, and, um, we actually received, uh, four different tips. Um, that case has been assigned over to our investigation unit, so it's actually being investigated by one of our detectives. Um, we have followed up on the leads, and, uh, we are continuing to investigate that. That case is still under investigation, so I'm limited on what I can discuss. I will say that there, um, there is some information, um, that is, uh, circulating out there, that, uh, um, that the suspects, um, or the, those that are involved, uh, responsible for, for doing the graffiti, has, uh, uh, been identified, and that there's documentary evidence, um, and that's just, uh, that's inaccurate at this point. We have not received, um, any form of, of really getting into that anymore, might jeopardize the, um, investigation, and I don't wanna do that, but I guess I just wanted to, um, just, um, if there's, there's some, um, misinformation going on, um, through the, um, Facebook, social media sites, that, uh, we have identified, and we have actual evidence, um, supporting evidence, and that the Police Department's not, uh, taking action, appropriate action on that, that's just not simply the, the case. We are asking for, um, the community, if there is evidence out there, if there is video, um, that shows the people involved, um, in this, uh, crime, that we would ask that they, um, provide that to the Police Department, and, uh, so that way we can continue, um, our investigation. Um, at the conclusion of that investigation, we will forward that over to the DA's office as well, for their, uh, review and consideration of charges. And, um, so, that's kinda where we're at on that. Um, and, uh, again, I just would, just encourage, uh, any community member that may have some information, that they, uh, are withholding, or just decided that they didn't wanna report it, please report it, because we need that information to continue this investigation. Um, couple of the other things, um, I brought up, uh, I think it was last council meeting, that, uh, we are looking at, um, revising some language for the graffiti ordinance. Um, we are still working on that, and, uh, um, that language will, uh, the new language will be brought to you guys for your review in short order. Um, also, um, there was a, um, a request, or, um, some comments on, uh, what type of police training, um, the Coos Bay Police Department particularly receives, um, as, uh, for their officers, and I just kinda wanted to touch on that, just briefly. Um, an officer, when they first come in to the department, they, uh, if they're not already certified, and haven't gone to the basic police academy, they're sent off to the basic police academy for 16 weeks. That's up in Salem. There's standardized training with, um, that is, um, basically put together by, um, the academy, and through legislative, um, uh, action and requirements, uh, of what an officer, what type of training an officer has to receive in the state of Oregon. Um, they receive that training in 16 weeks. When they come back to the Police Department, they're assigned to a FTO, which is a Field Training Officer. They're field training officers with that officer for generally a minimum of three and a half to four months. They're reviewing policy, they are, um, exhibiting their proficiency in, um, investigations, and the ability to, um, de-escalate situations, um, their ability to investigate crimes, write police reports, and, uh, forward those reports over to the District Attorneys and testify in court as well. Um, from there, DPSST is our certifying agency, and they require annual training to maintain our certification, so, um, annual training is provided to each and every officer, um, at the minimum standard, um, that DPSST requires, and then we go, uh, as an agency, we go up above, um, for each officer, the minimum requirement. Some other training, and I, I listed just a few, uh, courses that officers receive, and that we provide annual training, um, in the areas of ethics, um, civil rights, implicit bias, um, community relations, bias-based policing, um, bias-based crimes pertaining to how the Oregon Revised Statute is written, um, and so we, we review that, and we also are taught the ORSs in, in the, um, Basic Police Academy as well. And so, just recently, um, or as of, right now, where we're in this calendar year, um, our officers have received all those, um, updated training. We've also reviewed our policy, um, uh, 402, it's Alexa Pool Policy, on bias-based policing, and, um, so we, we are familiar with that, um, policy, and that policy also requires us to, um, revisit that policy annually, and so that's what we do, we stay in compliance to our policies. Um, another, uh, thing that we are doing at the Police Department, it's actually a, uh, legislative mandate that, uh, um, has, um, been required for all agencies to implement, based off of the size of their agency, and we've implemented ours, uh, July 1st. It's the stops program, and what stops program is, is the statistical transparency of police program. What that means is, any self-initiated activity that an officer does, uh, traffic stop, or self-initiated contact that they have with a person in the, in the field, when we clear that stop, or we provide dispatch, what we call a disposition, a dispo, when we provide that disposition to our dispatch, we also provide, um, certain codes to that, um, disposition that is actually set, those codes, um, uh, are set by the, by the state, and then they dump into a federal, um, database, which tracks, um, profiling, and so, that's what that is intended to make, you know, to, to, um, hold all of us accountable, and also to provide statistical information as to why officers are stopping, um, persons, whether they're in a traffic stop, or just, uh, casual contact stops. So all self-initiated, um, stops will have that, uh, disposition code, code. Um, that is, uh, something that, uh, we are, um, complying with state and federal laws in, and we are reporting those. Um, and then lastly, I was just gonna, um, briefly talk about, um, we, we do, um, also review the red flags, um, policy, and we, our officers are familiar with that, and, um, that policy pertains to, um, the extreme risk, uh, protection orders, that either an officer, law enforcement officer, and/or a family member can apply for, petition the courts for, and that is a, an extreme protection order, um, for an individual that is exhibiting, um, mental health issues, that might be a danger to themselves or others, um, they can petition the courts to have their firearms removed. If they're successful in that petition, those firearms could be moved, removed from that individual's, uh, but that process all has to go through the courts. Um, that process can be initiated by an officer or a family member, but there's a burden of proof that has to be met in order for that, uh, to be a successful, um, petition. And so, um, our officers are familiar with it, um, and, uh, but, uh, there is a level of, uh, burden that has to be, uh, able to be proven in order for that to be successful, so... Um, I, I think I've covered what I wanted to cover, but I am more willing to answer any questions, if you guys have questions for me.
Uh, well, I have a few, but if someone else wants to go first, um, first of all, you said graffiti ordinance is being looked at, so, uh, to, for that process, if I understand correctly, you review it, and you're reviewing it because it just needs to be updated, or there's new laws that are asking us to do this?
Uh, really, our reasons for looking at that is, um, that, uh, that particular ordinance hadn't been looked at in, in, uh, a period of time. We looked at some of the, um, obviously, we had, uh, a rise in graffiti-related crimes, uh, recently, and so we wanted to look at that ordinance and review it, and make sure that there wasn't some changes that needed to be made, and that it did cover all the bases. Um, one of the things that we're really, uh, making sure is the reporting process, and how it's reported to law enforcement, and then how it's reported to, uh, the property owner, property management company. We wanted to make sure that that is, um, covered, and that the removal of that graffiti, particularly in cases where it's offensive, um, language, or, um, hate-related speech, we wanna make sure that that is removed, um, ASAP, and so, that's, that's our reasons for looking at that.
So is there certain laws that we have to make sure that we're following when we do this ordinance?
There absolutely is, um, especially when you're looking at, uh, private property, um, you still have to consider that property owner's rights, and so, um, that's another reason why we wanna look at our ordinance, make sure that, uh, we are protecting that property owner's rights, but at the same time that we are getting, uh, graffiti, particularly in cases where it's offensive, we're getting it removed in a timely manner, or, and, and really, it's a sensitive and delicate, um, situation. We wanna, we wanna afford that, um, that ability to that property owner, to remove that, uh, that damaged property in a, in a way that they would want to, that is further damage their property, because we also have to remember, in this particular situation, that person's a victim as well. And so they, they've been victimized, their, uh, property has been destroyed, and so we wanna work with that property owner as well, to get that removed, but yet we want it removed as quickly as we can, because it's, it's, uh, offensive.
I think it's important, what, that the public hears what you just said, and the fact is that you're dealing with a property owner, um, as a victim, but you're not negating the fact that whatever the offensive language was directed at could be a victim as well, and you handle it in that manner.
Absolutely.
And that's, some, those are some statements that were made out there, that you were focused only on the property owner, when in fact, you're trying to focus on both.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, it's, and that's why I say it's somewhat, uh, delicate, um, you, we absolutely wanna focus on both. We could particularly have multiple victims, um, in that one, um, situation, and so we wanna look at it from, from both angles, or all those angles, absolutely.
So the other thing you mentioned is body cams, uh, so when are they gonna be, uh, installed, or here, uh, officers start using them, and being trained to use them?
So, um, we have already ordered our body cams, um, there is a process that, uh, they have to program the body cams, we also have dash cameras in all of our vehicles. Our body cameras will sync up with our dash cams, it'll be one system, we'll wear one, one microphone, one, uh, camera, and then it'll also sync up with our dash cam if we're on a traffic stop, so we'll have that. So there's a little bit of behind-the-scenes stuff that has to happen, uh, they've already been ordered. I was told that it was a six-to-eight week process, um, and then when we get them here, um, in-house, we're gonna have to have our IT, um, help us and, uh, get them implemented. I, I figure about a two-week implementation process. Um, we have policies in order, uh, we'll have to review our policies again, that pertain to body-worn cameras, and then we'll, we'll be able to, um, actually send them out on the field. I'm anticipating around September 1st, uh, we should have our body cameras, um, up and running, and you'll see officers out in the field wearing them, um, loosely, September 1st, uh, we'll, we'll see how that goes.
So can you tell me how many of the cities, or, and the county, that are, have, use these body cams? Does the county use it, and do any other cities in the county use them?
Um, I, I know, I'm not sure if all of the county deputies are using them, I know there may be a few, I, I do know that North Bend is, uh, using, not the same body cameras we're using, but they are using a, a form of body cameras. I don't know if all their officers have them, or not, um, uh, I know that we're seeing more and more agencies starting to, to use them, we're excited about them, uh, we're, we're looking forward to having that, uh, additional, um, tool.
I just was wondering what prompted us to get to body cams, was it because of there's any other entities in the community, other cities in the county that started it, or how did it come about? What brought it about? I know it was on the budget for January, so what's, uh, started this, uh, discussion to do?
That was gonna be one of my questions also, because this has been a long process of updating to, to this point.
Sure.
That started, actually, years ago.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would say, um, body cameras have been actually something we've been interested in for several years. Uh, our biggest, um, kinda holdback for our ability to implement them earlier was the fact that, um, we have already a significant amount of money invested into our dash cameras, and it's a WatchGuard product, and WatchGuard, at the time, when we first started looking at body cameras, WatchGuard didn't have a camera that, uh, interfaced with their already existing dash camera, so you would be wearing two different microphones, two different, um, camera, or one was the, uh, video system as well, and a microphone, and your other one would be your dash cam. And they had talked about coming out with a integrated system that works with one camera, and one, um, that did audio and video, and then it captured also your dash cam video. So, we were waiting for that, um, and it, it is now out, and it does also find, when it uploads, it finds the, the video that pertains to that incident in the dash, and it syncs them together. So, really, that's been kind of our, our delay. It's something that, I think, uh, that, as a police department, we've been, we, we just see the value in the tool. Um, it's, uh, it's a great, um, tool that we can wear on us, that will help us, uh, collect evidence, um, it, it will hold us accountable, um, there's just, there's, there's a lot of positive, uh, factors to the body cameras.
So, uh, another thing is, is that you mentioned, uh, you know, when we get reports in, on crime stuff, that we send it to the DA. Uh, also, um, do you work with any other agencies, law enforcement agencies? I mean, is this something that's common, or not common, or how's it work?
I would say that we have, uh, good relationships with, uh, all the, um, agencies in our area, obviously, as well as, um, those are state agencies, we work well with, uh, Oregon State Police, but we also have, um, a relationship, good relationship with the FBI, um, and, uh, yes, we have been in contact with the FBI on these cases, um, and we have shared information with the, um, the field agents that, uh, and actually his supervisor, I've directly talked with, um, in, in reference to these cases that we're seeing come across, um, our desk now, and so we are in relationship with them, and in conversation with the FBI. And I know, uh, from the DA, um, standpoint, I know that, uh, Mr. Fraser has also shared some information with the FBI as well.
Good. So, um, I understand that, uh, and I'm glad to hear this, that you and Jay Brown had a phone call yesterday, can you give us, uh, some highlights of what that discussion entailed?
Sure, um, I did receive a phone call from her, um, she, she, um, wanted to mainly, uh, report to me, and, and, um, provide me some information about the incident, um, or not incident, I'm sorry, the event that, uh, is scheduled to occur on the boardwalk, uh, the 8th, uh, of, of August, uh, this Saturday, and she had asked, uh, me about some, um, police, uh, procedures, and what we were planning to do to make sure that, uh, it was a safe environment. Uh, I provided her with some information that I, they could, and explained to her that it was all, also, um, the Police Department and the city of Coos Bay's, um, goal to have a peaceful, um, event, and provide a setting where they can exercise, um, their rights, and have a peaceful, um, demonstration, and so, uh, that was initially our conversation. She also, um, reported to me some, some concerns that she had of, um, some, um, let's say some, some threats, or potentially some stalking, Facebook stalking, that, uh, her and a few of her members have been receiving on, um, their Facebook, um, pages. She asked that I look into them. Um, we did assign, uh, the limited information I have right now, I should assign it over to one of my investigators to, to, to look into it. Um, I was also, uh, told that I was gonna get, uh, quite a bit of, uh, information, um, and details pertaining to what's been reported, and I haven't seen that yet, so I'm waiting for that, and we are gonna take it serious, and we're gonna look into it. Um, I don't know at, uh, face value right now, uh, if I ha, if we have a crime, if we do, or if we don't, I don't know. There's a lot of stuff, um, and I jotted a couple little things down that I, I would, we will need, um, in order to investigate, I mean, we, we need information, because we have to determine people involved, um, who could potentially be victims, who could potentially be a suspect. We also, really, one of the biggest things is, we have to determine venue, and we have to determine who the jurisdictional, who has the jurisdictional authority over that crime, and it could potentially not even be within our jurisdiction. So, when you're working cyber-type of crimes, um, you have to establish all these, you think, and you need the, the relevant information in, in order to be able to do that. Additionally, these crimes are more difficult to work, because they, they require not only venue, um, the jurisdictional, uh, agency that has the authority, but also you have to be able to prove that the person that is sending those, um, those threats are, is actually the, the sender. We know, we live in a world of technology, and things can, can present differently than what the actual factual, uh, information is, and so, when we see the information, um, and we have something we can kinda go on, we, we do have an investigator assigned to it, we are gonna take it serious.
So she has, uh, stated that, and I don't know if she revealed this to you, that she had some information for the people that did the graffiti, uh, was she able to give you some information that was helpful?
Um, she, she provided some information, um, again, that's when I was, uh, referring earlier, I'm, I'm waiting for some actual, um, uh, documentary evidence, and/or, um, physical evidence that was, uh, suggested that they have. Um, we, we, we need more than what we have right at this point, um, but, again, I, I just wanna reiterate, we are taking it serious, and we will look into the leads. If, if somebody provides us leads, uh, information via email, phone call, whatever, if they provide that information that is supposedly circulating out there, we will look into it.
So another item is, and I think this is for everyone, not just, uh, Ms. Brown, that, uh, about getting restraining order, it was stated that, uh, the city of Coos Bay, the Police Department, has to press charges for someone to get a restraining order. Yeah, can you do some clarification on that? Uh, I know I've gone through the process in the past myself, but I didn't know, I think everyone needs to know that there's a way to do this, and so they can feel comfortable, uh, if they're feeling, feeling threatened in some fashion.
Yeah, absolutely. So, charges do not have to be, um, initiated against an individual prior to, uh, somebody, a petitioner, being eligible for, uh, a restraining order. A restraining order is actually, i- it's similar to the protect, the extreme protective order that I talked about earlier, um, in the red flags policy. Uh, that, that particular petition is, um, initiated by the petitioner, um, outside of, uh, law enforcement, it doesn't, law enforcement doesn't have to have pending charges, doesn't have to have applied charges to, um, the persons involved, they can actually go through the courts, and they fill out that, uh, restraining order, and it goes in front of a judge, and that judge looks to see if they have probable cause to support that affidavit, and if so, then that restraining order is granted. Now, it's granted in a temporary manner, pending, uh, an appeal process for that respondent. Respondent obviously gets an opportunity to, to state their, um, case, and, um, you know, uh, appeal the restraining order, but that process is handled through the courts, not through the Police Department, and it's independent of, uh, charges. Uh, we see restraining orders a lot in domestic violence-type of settings, um, sometimes we don't have a crime, but there's some, maybe some, um, mental abuse going on, um, uh, or real low-grade physical abuse that we are unable to make a, a custody arrest on, and oftentimes that victim is encouraged to file for a restraining order, and so that's independent of the actual criminal investigation or criminal charges.
Okay. So the only thing, and this is just in general, um, you know, it's unfortunate that these crimes have happened, and, uh, but I, you know, I, I don't think realize, the citizens realize that how seriously we do take this, uh, and I wanna make this clear. So, uh, Deputy Chief, can you give us an idea of approximately how much time and hours have been put in on these items that we've talked about this evening?
Um, I can, I can tell you, I don't, I don't have, uh, you know, two hours, three hours, I can tell you, w- we have put a tremendous amount of time into this. Um, when, um, when we get the initial report, we take it serious, we start tracking down any leads we have, um, when it gets to a point where it's actually assigned over to an investigator, that means that patrol officer's already spent a great deal amount of time on it, and it's, and it's beyond their ability to be able to spend any more time, because they have multiple calls coming in all day long. So, then that process is forwarded over to me for review, and then I spend some time on reviewing it, and determining what the best course of action is. Then I, I assign it out to an investigator, that investigator basically starts from, okay, where did that patrol officer leave off, where is there some additional, um, you know, leads, or areas that, uh, I need to follow up on, then they take it, and then they start the, the investigation process, and we are spending a, a lot of time. Um, uh, I, I know that sometimes, uh, people don't see that, um, and it's hard sometimes to, to see that, because we've got a, a lot of other stuff going on, but there, we're spending a tremendous amount of time on.
Well, I just want people to realize how seriously we're taking it. So are you, would it be fair to say that we're putting in, we've put in hundreds of hours so far?
I, I would say that's probably a fair assessment.
And, uh, that doesn't even relate to Roger, how much time have you put in, public works put in, and some others, and, uh, are your city staff that's on top of that?
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that.
All right, uh, councilors, um, I'm sure you might have some questions also for Deputy Chief.
I just wanted to bring up one thing for the sake of, uh, perspective and sense of scale, uh, for our attendees, and for the folks watching from home. Early on, we talked about the training process to become an officer in Oregon. Uh, it's a 16-week school, and there's more training here, there's annual trainings, and I'm not sure people realize, in the scope of the national dialogue, how unique Oregon is, and what by standards it has for its officers. It's my understanding some states don't even have certifications necessarily through that school. Uh, could you speak to, kind of, the uniqueness of Oregon, and the extent to which they train their officers?
Well, uh, yeah, I think you're, you're absolutely right. Um, I think Oregon does hold, uh, their officers to a higher standard, a higher level of accountability than a lot of states. Um, we do have that governing body over us, and we have requirements for our certification, and if you don't maintain those hourly requirements, um, you'll get the notice from DPSST that your certification is under review, and potentially in jeopardy of losing your certification, and so, and you can't be a police officer, state or county certified, so you're absolutely right. There's other states that don't have those, those requirements, those mandates, um, and I think Oregon does it right in that area.
I learned in a, recently, Oregon Cities Meeting, uh, from one of the attorneys there, that the state of Oregon per capita decertifies more officers per year than the state of California does.
They do.
Or, I'm sorry, not per capita. Or, I'm sorry, not per capita, in total growth.
They do have a pretty stringent certification process, and they will review your certification for multiple reasons.
Other counselors, comments, questions?
I had a question about the statistics that you guys send off. I was just wondering if that might be something that the council could get an updated review on when you guys, whenever you guys assemble your data?
So it's new to us, so I'll answer it by saying, if it's available to us, we would more than willing share it. It actually goes into our records management system when we clear that stock, and it actually uploads to the federal and state database. So how we access that, I don't know yet, but I could certainly find out and bring that back to you guys and let you know if that's available statistics.
Okay.
But it's new for us. It's a program that we just implemented a while ago.
Perfect. Thank you.
Phil, anything?
I'd like to circle back around to the dash cam and body cams.
Yes.
Do those, do those transmit or upload in real time? Is it possible for, say, the dispatch or, you know, your office to actually see that interaction at the time it's happening? Or is it something that you offload when the officer comes back into the office?
So there is some system out there that does allow some live video. However, you have to have a person that's akin amount of bandwidth and the ability to view that in a live stream mode. We attempted that on just even our dash cams with a Cradle Point device, and it just, we, our terrain is just not conducive for such. And I think most agencies, I can't speak for them all and all the programs out there, but most are finding that that's very difficult to do. Ours is a wireless upload, so it takes it out of the hands of the officers having to upload it, and then the video doesn't get uploaded as soon as they pull into the access area or the hotspot. It'll automatically upload onto a server, and then there is inability for them to edit any of that video. So it's safe in that matter, and it is uploaded, but for live stream, it's extremely difficult, like we're even experiencing in our council meetings. It's really hard to do that.
So if you, if you couldn't do video, is it possible for audio? Because that takes a whole lot less bandwidth. I'm just curious. I'm, you know, I don't know what the technology is today, but I know it's changing every minute.
Yeah.
And I know technology is better today than it was a year ago.
Sure.
And I'm just curious. And it's more, my concern, or the reason I'm asking is more as a concern for the safety of the officer than anything else, so that, you know, in case it is a tense situation, there could be someone else that's actually hearing what's happening in case that officer needs that assistance without having to press a button or make a call on the radio or whatever.
Sure.
I don't know if that's even possible.
I haven't seen that yet. I'm not going to say that that's not out of the, you know, the future. I mean, that could definitely be where we're moving towards. I don't, I haven't seen that technology.
It could be next year, that's where we're.
You mean to actually get it, well, get the stream while it's being recorded? The technology exists. It's just our topography, like you said, you know, it just depends, we're kind of rural.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah. I think the technology, I think it exists. I don't know if any of the police equipment has advanced to that ability yet. They're kind of pretty thrilled with themselves for doing wireless upload. So, you know, and, but we are too, because that's amazing, you know? I remember the days of taking your disk out of the dash cam and come up and upload it in a docking station. We don't have to do that anymore, so.
Okay. I was just curious.
There's also a security aspect to that, too, if you're in the middle of investigation, that, you know, unless you've got a secure network, it's pushing it back to, you know, the officer or dispatch, and it's not available. Because once it gets into the internet, then, I mean, the network out there, then if you go anywhere, and then you're compromised, investigation.
We have to fall under sieges.
That's a good point, too. Yeah.
We have to be careful, because we'll air certain protected criminal justice information. And if it was just live stream, that could be jeopardized as well.
It could be hazardous. Yeah, I see, I see that.
Stephanie, anything else?
The only thing that I had to circle back around, and I'm always one to give the information as frequently as possible, is if people do need to report something regarding graffiti or information about the cases that you're working, how do they, how do they get ahold of you? What's the best way to give you a tip?
So we do have our non-emergency line. It's 541-269-8911. We do also have Kuz Stop Crime, and that is 541-267-6666. So four sixes. And then, you know, if it's something that they need to get out immediately, there's always 911. And if they don't know who to share the information with, they can call one of those numbers that I just provided and just get into our dispatch center and say, I want to talk to an officer, or I want to talk to an administrator. If they need an email address, we'll provide them that email address. We just really encourage the information, yeah, and the reporting of that information.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Deputy Chief Shepard, thank you so much. This has been something that you do every council meeting, and I appreciate it. It keeps everyone informed. A lot of things are going on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so for the public, I want to thank you for your patience. It's important that we get this information. Again, there's a lot of things happening, and a lot of things are going on, and it's important that the council is informed with proceeding and making sure that we're on the track that we need to be. So the next item is public comments. So on the public comments this evening, I have a list, and this is something we have at every council meeting, and it's limited to three minutes. These are for comments only. We've also received some public comments in writing that all the council has and staff has, and it'll be recorded. I think Michelle's around here somewhere, I understand, recording this. And those will go into the record for publication and review if anyone wants. If the council wants to address any of those comments this evening to staff, I would suggest you do that, but we'll take the public comments that are here first. Then we'll go, we'll take the public comments for 30 minutes. After 30 minutes, we're going to get into business, and then we'll come back, and anyone that has not had an opportunity to talk at that time, we'll go ahead and open up the dialogue again for more public comments and make sure that everyone's heard. But sometimes that we have, you know, guests here that are making proposals that are on the agenda, we want to be conscious of their, you know, and give them the timeframe that they need to deal with that. So that's business before us, and that's important that we do that also. So that being said, public comments are open, and the first one is Tristan, and if you would come up and give us your name. And you don't need to give us your address, but please give us the city that you reside in. I know some people are concerned about giving their actual address, but at least the city that you reside in, please.
Great. Can you hear me?
If you could speak, pull the mic down a little bit more.
Is that better? Okay. Yeah, my name's Tristan Avalos. I live here in Kuzbe. So my public comment is in regards to the city of Kuzbe police training in response to hate and bias incidents, as well as threats of violence or death, which we heard a lot about. So thank you. It may be a little irrelevant, but I'll go anyway. While most people's day-to-day may seem unaffected by much other than COVID-19, there are incidents in this community that shake people to the point of not being comfortable leaving their house. Can Kuzbe really say that it is inclusive to all people if there is no overt active effort being made to address, not just acknowledge such incidents? This is in reference to recent hate and bias incidents in our community. Obviously, there is some addressing going on. This is not to say that everyone in this community is hateful or aggressive, but there are noticeable acts that are harming the community. The June 23rd incident of, in Empire of the No-N-word Zone is the example that was talked about earlier. Three weeks later, on July 15th, there was the F individual's name with a crude rendering of a noose directly to the right. An officer was asked about the incident on the scene on the 15th, stating that someone's hurt feelings does not make them, make something a hate crime. In my eyes, when there is an overtly racially motivated incident just around the corner from a noose after a name of a BIPOC individual, the totality of the events makes very clear that the July 15th incident was very likely racially motivated and should be treated as a hate crime, and possibly even a public threat to the targeted individual's life or safety. A noose after a name is a threat. What if it was your name? This leads me to my questions, which some have been addressed for the city of Kuzbe. Can any information on the hate and bias crime police training materials provided by the state be made public knowledge? How can the citizens of Kuzbe know what is expected of our police officers who are meant to protect and serve every person in this community? How can the public find information about if there are open investigations into these incidents and access any related information that should be public knowledge? As an example, have the police spoken to neighbors or checked if there are any security cameras near the incidents? As is relevant or safe for public knowledge, answers to these questions would be good to know for not just these incidents, but any incident that infringes on the safety of the community, in particularly hate or bias incidents. With the recent and upcoming public demonstrations and events surrounding social and racial justice, there have been a number of threats made to various community members or groups as a whole, but it feels there can be little done to prevent anything from happening until something unfortunately happens, which the county sheriff said, if violence happens, violence happens. Considering that from a conceptual, considering that from a conceptual perspective, that police do not inherently prevent crime but respond to it, what can the city of Kuzbe do to invest in the community and the people to foster a more supportive, connected, and compassionate populace? I will make time.
Thank you, Tristan. Appreciate that. Okay, Cameron Langley. Hello, Cameron. They state your name and the city that you reside in.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you can pull it, yeah, if you look closer, one way or the other. You're tall, so.
Okay. Can you hear me?
You're better, yes.
All right.
If I speak a little, a little bit louder, if you can.
Good evening, counselors, mayor, and city manager. Didn't mean to leave you out. My name is Cameron Langley, and I live in Kuzbe. I spoke at the July 7th council meeting about the racism I've seen here in some of the racist history of Kuzbe. That same day, a proposition for the formation of a committee to represent the sub-communities of the Kuzbe area was presented to you. I am a part of the Safer as One movement that supports this proposition. Our marginalized and minority communities deserve equitable representation in our local government. We have requested that a committee for social, cultural, and community development and representation be established, which would establish and maintain a network of social, cultural, and community support, promote education on inclusivity in relation to sub-communities of the Kuzbe area, provide resources to help community members educate themselves and others on the various community, sub-communities of the Kuzbe area, and give sub-communities representative voice in the conversations and decision-making process of the Kuzbe city government. You have likely heard from marginalized community members the racism, sexism, transphobia, homophobia, and overall hatred that occurs in this area that they've encountered, which naturally kind of overrides the "none of that have I seen here" comment by some in our community. Maybe you're confounded as to what more to do for the folks telling you to do more about the hate and systemic racism here, but maybe you don't understand or relate to all these sub-communities. So I come to you today, not only as a member of Safer as One, but as a candidate for the people running for Kuzbe city councillor that endorses this proposition, to ask of you to support this proposal and give equitable representation to our many sub-communities. And with that, I will say that I wish you all a swell night, and I'd like to conversate with many of you soon.
Thank you, Cameron. Appreciate it. Okay, next individual is Robert Trout. Robert, if you'd just come up and give us your name and the city that you reside in, please.
My name is Robert Trout. I live in Kuzbe, Oregon, and I have a simple announcement for the city council of Kuzbe from the Oregon Department of State Lands. Due to the inability to process proper witness information, they have recently come into an amount of $97,500 for which there is no claimant at the state lands at this point. And I would just like to dedicate that money to the New Democrats and the David Kennedy Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, next person is Jay Brown. Jay, out in the lobby? If you'd just give us your name and the city you reside in, please. We don't need an address, just the city, please.
Can I touch, was it cleaned off?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm Jay Brown, and I'm once again not going to give my city, state, or address due to death threats.
Not even the city?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
So this time, we have something written. How long do I have? Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay, I'll try my best to get through it.
We need to get through, please. Everyone else has been doing the time.
Good evening. I'm Jay Brown, local Black leader for the Peaceful Black Lives Matter movement. Because although your city likes to address me as the local puppy-hating, pot-stirring, Antifa ringleader, I'm actually just Jay Brown, the local peaceful Black leader. I have been met with hostility these last 67 days, but have not been met with a simple phone call from city officials. I have been met with death threats bred by the hate towards the color of my skin and how much my life doesn't matter, but cannot get a simple email response. I am that Jay Brown, the Black woman whose name was put on a fence three weeks ago with a picture of a noose. Where these are not hate crimes in Oregon, I'm not a victim, according to the city. I am the same Black woman who is actively stalked daily, threatened daily, with no intervention from the police department, although they say they have intervened. The same Black woman fighting for the city of Kuzbe to acknowledge that Black lives do matter, even in small towns like Kuzbe. Regardless of how big the Black population is, 67 days of being in a place of fear because I have no protection, is one Black person too many? I followed all the steps in the current system in place in Kuzbe. Clearly, it doesn't work. Because I stand here with a target on my back for being Black and vocal. Since I have hurt no one, I have broken nothing. I have done nothing but been vocal. Why do I deserve death threats? So who is really the violent one? Is it me, or is it the people that you guys keep protecting? We, as citizens, agree Black lives do in fact matter, and as a community, we are tired of the city protecting a small population and making the entire town look racist and hateful because they, you, will not take action on the population that is bluntly racist and violent. The city of Kuzbe's citizens are tired as a whole of the community being slandered as a racist town because you are going above and beyond to protect these violent criminals instead of just taking accountability and problem solving. It has been made clear for the last 67 days that Black lives do not matter to city officials or law enforcement here in the city of Kuzbe. So instead of sending another 2,500 emails, 1,458 phone calls, and a bat signal, we have been, that have all been unheard and unanswered and ignored, instead of asking questions and making comments that have also gone unheard, I'm here to give the city a solution. Since there is no representation of the Black community or LGBT community on the city council or law enforcement, as you can see, there is clearly no way you can make policy change for Blacks without Black involvement, like you have done regarding our holiday Juneteenth. We are offering a sit-down with law enforcement and city officials with Black leaders from all over the state of Oregon, along with local Black leaders, to talk and collaborate with one another to get a clear understanding and perspective on what it is. I know, I just have like two more sentences, and then somebody else will take over. We are offering a sit-down with law enforcement and city officials to have a sit-down with Black leaders from all over the state of Oregon, along with local Black leaders to talk with, talk and collaborate with one another to get a clear understanding and perspective of what it is we would like to see implemented into the policies in the city of Kuzbe. We are proposing this sit-down happen Saturday after the peaceful event, 5:30, Kuzbe Boardwalk. Hold on, let me go get somebody else.
Thank you. Next person, is it Yolanda? Yolanda, I believe? Thank you. Yolanda? Yolanda? Could we please give us your name and the city you reside in, and go ahead with your comments.
My name is Yolanda Paverka. I do not wish to disclose anything else. Now.
Mask, please. Mask, please. Your mask.
Now, in the event that this time doesn't work for the city officials, we are open to work around your busy schedule via Zoom to obey the current COVID restrictions. The Zoom link has been sent to your mayor's email as of 5:15 this evening with instructions on how to reschedule if needed. The email is titled, "Black Lives Matter Meeting." In case you have trouble finding it, including is my personal phone number, as well as 12 Black leaders from the state of Oregon, a Black politician, and a legal observer for a nonprofit civil rights organization. I hope to hear from you by the end of the week regarding this sit-down. We understand you have to read through our list of suggestions, and although you claim to have never received them, we are glad to see you have implemented three of 10 suggestions into your city's budget already. We do not need credit for these suggestions since we know you continue to want all the credit in your attempts to oppress the Black community. But we would like to offer you more help despite the clear disrespect. If you think these are good, we have many more suggestions for you. We believe that this sit-down could provide a chance for us to work together and provide a better environment for the 0.08% of your population, as well as 100% of your population, since the suggestions are not targeted directly towards the Black community. We want equal treatment. Therefore, making special laws based off the color of your skin tone solves nothing. In fact, it causes more division. Our suggestion benefit for the entire population, benefit the entire population, including law enforcement, mental health, LGBTQ+. Our suggestions are being presented by the Black community because we believe as the most oppressed and hated population, we can provide the most insight on topics that would have gone unseen for many, many years. These suggestions were also drafted with the help of a sub-communities and minorities, as well as citizens in a small rural town. We are given an opportunity to the city. Elected officials, whose job is it to make the best choices for citizens, all citizens, an opportunity to law enforcement, whose job is to protect and serve citizens, all citizens. We are giving you an opportunity to help your struggling population. Will you accept, or will this be ignored again? But once again, whether there's 14 or 1,400, whether a big city, or a small country, or a town, don't let someone in your community become the next hashtag. We are business owners, we are kids, we are mental health workers, we are families, we are nurses, we are artists, we are DJs, we are cooks.
Time's up. Zuluma Romes, I believe? Mrs. Romes? Miss Romes? Hello?
Hello?
Could you give us your name and the city you reside in, please?
My name is Sulema Romero. I will not give any other information. We are business owners, we are kids, we are mental health workers, we are families, we are nurses, we are artists, we are DJs, we are cooks. The list is endless because we are human. We deserve the same equal treatment in this town and should never, ever fear for our lives because of our skin tone. If Black lives really matter, show us. Because currently, none of you have shown an inch of interest in your minorities or your sub-communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Rees is next. Okay. Genevieve Martinez? Hello? Your name and the city you reside in, please.
My name is Genevieve Martinez, and I live in North Bend.
Okay. Thank you.
So I moved here roughly two and a half years ago, and I met my birth father for the first time. And one of the main lessons he taught me was peace, love, and righteousness towards your common man. And I believe that when I moved here, that I found that. And it wasn't until I started my first year at SWAC that that facade was ruined for me, when I found out about Alonso Tucker, who was lynched in 1902. I was bewildered and shocked at what I had found out about this town, that I had built up to so many of my friends, to so many of my family, to have solved all of my issues where I thought I would be comforted and welcomed. But when I find out that I cannot proudly bring my friends here without having to tell them, oh, this city is cool, but... it is shameful for me to do that. First Friday before the Saturday protest, I was demonstrating with a couple of other gentlemen that I had met, and we had encountered a counter protester who was engaging us about what we were protesting for. It was for the BLM movement, and we did not react in any sort of way. An African-American gentleman pulled up behind her, and after she had left, he had informed me that he was very proud to see that people were out here because his family was terrified for him to be here because he did also not know about Coos Bay's history. History has a very, very nasty way of getting back at those who ignore it. And it isn't until we address the issues that have been created in the past, but that still impact our present. And it is only until then that I will actually have some sort of hope for Coos Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Okay, that's the extended public comments. We made the timeframe the first 30 minutes, so we'll get on with the rest of the council meeting. The next item on the council agenda is the consent calendar. So council, have you had a chance to review the minutes?
I'll make the motion. We approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar submitted. Any other discussion or comments on the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll ask for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. I just want to ask, council, do you need a break before we continue on, or just move on? Move on?
Move on.
All right. Next presentation, or next item on the agenda is the presentation of the Downtown Association Semiannual Report that we get by Main Street Manager Holly Boardman. Hello, Holly, how are you?
Hi. Good to be here. I'm on the second slide. On my first slide, it just had the CBDA logo. My name is Holly Boardman. I'm the executive...
What lights do we turn off here? I think Phil might. Do you know? Thank you.
Hey.
There we go. So my name is Holly Boardman. I'm the executive director of the Coos Bay Downtown Association. And I'm really happy to be here to give our semiannual report. We kicked off the year with our Celebrate Downtown Annual Membership Meeting on January 16th, 2020. We had guest speakers Mayor Joe Benetti and building owner Rob Cracker. And it was just a really inspiring evening to hear about the buildings that are being renovated downtown, what's happening in Coos Bay in the future, and the crowd was just really invigorated by the speakers. We also held our board member elections. We added two new board members, Katie Granato and Steve Schneiderman. We gave out our awards to Dana Weber with Banner Bank for years of service, Walt and Sandy Evans for Volunteer of the Year, and Carolyn Johnson with the City for the Partnership of the Year. I want to thank you to all the city council members who attended. We really appreciate seeing you there. Here's Joe Benetti and Rob Cracker. We had our highest turnout ever. We had just about 90 people, which for us was a really big turnout. We have board member Beth Clarkson with Checkerberry's Flowers and Gifts. Beth is the president of the Coos Bay Downtown Association. She's also the chair of the organization committee. She also serves on the design committee. And I couldn't do my job without her. Pretty much every day, we have interactions on different things that are happening, and what are her input on that. She's also been extremely generous to the farmers market. The farmers market manager started out, and our old computer crashed, and Beth, on behalf of Checkerberry's, purchased her a new laptop for the farmers market. So we couldn't have gone on with our farmers market without that new laptop, especially with all the budget restraints we're having. And then just recently, our beloved cart that we carried everything around with at the farmers market, the wheel fell off, so we had to get a new cart, and Checkerberry's nicely, once again, helped us out and got us a new cart. So just a ton of thanks to Beth and Checkerberry's. This year, we promoted the 3A OSAA State Basketball Championship. It was March 5th through the 7th. We work with the Visitor Center and Marshfield and North Bend High School on this project. We contacted the businesses to update their reader boards welcoming the teams and the athletes. We informed the businesses of the upcoming tournament, and we promoted downtown. This is a great event for our community. People come from all over. They reserve the hotel rooms, they eat in our restaurants, they shop at our retailers, and it's just a great free event for the entire community. Next, we have board member Suzie Gibbs with Jenny Shoes. Suzie serves on the design committee, and she has a really artistic eye, and she's really great about putting ideas in and helping come up with the seasonal banners that we're constantly updating and changing out. So we're really glad to have her vision with us on the design committee. The Maritime Legacy Days, one of the tall ships was retired, and the other one stayed in port in Washington due to a grant that they received. So we're hopeful that next year, we will get one of the tall ships docked back in Coos Bay, and we will be able to hold our annual treasure hunt at that time as well. Next, we have board member Dana Weber with Banner Bank. It's doing something weird on my screen here. It says "hold." Looks like something went wrong. We're trying to get you back into the meeting. It just has... Do you want to look real quick? It just has some weird thing on the screen here. So next, we have Dana Weber with Banner Bank. And Dana serves on the organization committee. And she just has really great ideas on how to get our membership paid and how to grow our membership. She just has a real mind for business, and so we're really appreciative of that. Also, Banner Bank has always been there to support the CBDA. Every year, they're our Santa sponsor, which if you don't know, we have Santa Comes to Town, and then we walk over to the Egyptian Theater where we play the movie Elf. And during the snowball scene, we have a softball fight, where this year, we had over 3,500 pairs of socks donated. So it's a pretty amazing event. Along with sponsoring that, they also provide the cookies and the cider that we have while we're waiting for Santa to arrive. This year, the farmers market had some setbacks in starting due to social distancing and hand washing. We are required to now have hand washing stations throughout the farmers market, and those were costing us about $500 a month just in the four hand washing stations. So Banner Bank just jumped right up and said, how about this? How about we sponsor your hand washing stations for your first month? And for us, that $500 that we didn't have to raise was just a relief for us. So we're grateful to them for the hand washing station sponsor for June. In addition to that, they had Banner Bank pencils made up for us. So when we do our food stamps and we swipe the food stamp card, they use the pencil to put in their PIN so that everyone's not constantly touching the machine and we're not wiping it down between each people. So then they offered the pencils, so that was great. And then finally, they're doing what's called, we're just starting, in the starting process of this, but they're going to do a dues relief program match in the amount of $2,000, where they're going to help new members join the Coos Bay Downtown Association as bronze or silver members, and they'll match their payment. So we're hoping to grow the membership by an additional 30 members with that program. So big thanks to Dana Weber and Banner Bank. The farmers market, this was our 20th season. We usually start the first Wednesday in May and go to the last Wednesday in October. We had to postpone during May because we were dealing with all the COVID-19 guidelines through the CDC, the state, and the Oregon Farmers Market Association. But we were able to open in June, the first Wednesday in June, and we go to the last Wednesday in October. We had a new farmers market manager, Melissa Hassart, and three weeks into her job, was COVID-19 shut down. So not only did she have to learn a completely new job, she had all these new guidelines to learn about too. So she was in webinars, two, three webinars a day, just trying to learn everything. She's done a fantastic job, and we're really happy to have her. The reason the farmers market can open is because we are considered an essential service. We are like a grocery store. We have masks required, and we also follow social distancing protocols, and we have hand washing stations. And at each booth, they have hand sanitizer and a social distancing monitor at each booth. This year, for the SNAP Match Program, it came back. It was a federal program. I also wrote a grant for it. We received the grant. People that are on food stamps that run $10 of food stamps off their card, they can get what's called the Double Up Food Bucks $10 Match. So you spend $10, you get $10 match. That $10 is good towards vegetables and produce. So we're really happy to have this program back again this year. We get people that come every week just for that extra $10. So it's a great service to our community. Plus, it's great for all the farmers to get that extra income from the Double Up Food Bucks. Our average vendor attendance per week is 45 per week. Due to social distancing, we have to have 10 feet of space between each booth at the market, whereas, as you can see, last year at this time, our average vendor attendance was 90. So we have cut our farmers market in half due to social distancing, so people have space when they're waiting in lines as well. Thank you to Banner Bank for the hand washing stations for June, Harmony Home Care in July. And we just found out South Coast Family Dentistry is going to be our August hand washing station sponsor. We had a Plexiglas and barrier donated by 7-Eleven. The farmers market is sponsored by Jenny Shoes, Wildflower Cafe, Coos Bay Food Co-op, Oregon Health Insurance Marketplace, and so it goes coffeehouse. We want to say a thank you to the city. You guys are always cleaning the streets for us, and afterwards, you pick up the garbage. You're always just so friendly and helpful. We really appreciate all your help. And if you haven't been to the farmers market, come and join us. Just some fun farmers market pictures, the Chang's beautiful flowers, and James Orchard's cherries, and the yarn for Driftwood Farm Yarn and Candle, the Whiskie Hill Berry Girls, and the Coastal Donuts van. So the organization committee, we're working on a new membership drive. We have a total of 71 members, which for during COVID-19 and all the cutbacks, it's actually a really good amount of members, so we're really happy with that. We applied on behalf of Rob Cracker for the Buggy Bank Building for the Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant. They received the grant in the amount of $200,000. 201 Central LLC is the owner of the Buggy Bank Building. The work is progressing nicely and should be completed by early August. There will be 10 apartments and a communal living space in the upstairs of the building. This Coos Bay Downtown Association also received the Oregon Community Foundation Grant in the amount of $5,000 for general operating support in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. So here's the Buggy Bank Building. If you're not familiar with it, the outside of it. And this is what the upstairs looked like before they started their work. This is the revitalization grant for $200,000. And this is 201 Central LLC, the owner of the Buggy Bank Building. This is some of the work they've been doing, the communal living space with the kitchen and the hallway for the apartments and that nice archway right there. And then we have board member Julie Graham with Bykolsa Media. She is the chair of the Promotions Committee, and she's always thinking of new ways to get people to come downtown, into the retailer shops, and spend their money, and just keep this being a really revitalized downtown. So we're very happy to have her working with us. The Promotions Committee puts on great events year-round. They assisted in promoting the 3A OSAA Tournament, and they held the COVID-19 Safe Farmers Market. In the first half of the year, we are preparing for all the events in the second half of the year. Unfortunately, we've had to cancel the Blackberry Arts Festival and the Bay Area Fund Festival due to not being able to meet state COVID-19 guidelines. It was a very difficult decision for us to make to cancel these festivals. At the time, the limit was 250 outside. Now, I believe it's 100. But we get thousands of people that come. On our insurance certificate, I believe we say it's 10,000 people that we get that attend these events. They were also requiring that we would have contact information on every single person that attended. And they also had to have reservation and tickets in advance for every person that attended. So anyways, our hands were kind of tied. It was a very difficult decision, and we're looking forward to having the events next year. We meet regularly and are always looking for ways to bring people downtown. We're currently working on a drive-by Santa experience. Next, we have board member Sneev Schneiderman with Marshfield Merc's Tile. Steve is on the Economic Vitality Committee, and he's the co-chair of the Promotions Committee. And he's always helping us at the end of farmers market. He drives around with his truck and picks up the really heavy street closure signs, which I'm thankful for because I can barely lift them. And he brings over the hand washing stations so that Road Rooter can pick them up. So he's a big help. We really appreciate it. Here's just some fun pictures of promotions in the farmers market, the Springo Myers food truck, the fudge lady. What the farmers market looks like now is it's social distance with the space between the booth, and some of the produce, how there's tables in front, so it's a no-touch market. So then the shoppers get their food... So then the shoppers get their food brought to them. They can't touch it and pick it up. Next, we have board member Doug Woolsey. Doug is the chair of the design committee. And he's been doing this for many years. And he's really interested in bringing the historical side of Cusbeay with the artistic and the design aspect together. And so he has really great ideas on the different projects that we're working on, such as the bike rack project, which is, they look like running legs, which kind of go with the tradition of running and Steve Prefontaine in our area. So Doug has really great ideas. And like I said, he always is somehow tying it to history and making it flow really well. The design committee displayed and hung the seasonal banners. The flower baskets arrived and made a highlight downtown. Just as everything was shutting down and it was kind of depressing and difficult for everybody, we were so happy to have those beautiful flower baskets arrive to highlight downtown. And it was just nice driving by and seeing these really festive bouquets and thinking, okay, some things are normal and some things are going to continue. We're also working on the bike rack project. The CBDA purchased the design from an artist in Tennessee. We received two grants, $5,000 from the Ford Family Foundation and $2,500 from Jordan Co. We were in the process of having Marshfield High School manufacture the racks. The city will help install them. There will be three legs at the pre-mural, three at the boardwalk, two at the visitor center, and one on Central and Second. The grant has been extended to April 2021 due to the school closure and the building racks being on hold. So we're just right in the process of that right now. We have board member Barb Dunham with KDOC and Travel Source of the Oregon Coast. She serves on the organization committee. And for the past two years, she was also the editor for our newsletter. Here's just a quick sign of the wayfinding signs in the flower baskets that's done by the design committee. We have board member Stephanie Kilmer with KDOC and she's also our city liaison. Stephanie is the chair of the Economic Vitality Committee and she also serves on the promotions committee. Stephanie has been instrumental in bringing a Travel Oregon grant for $20,000 to the Cusbeay Downtown Association. Her work with RDI and the visitor center has been pivotal to what we're trying to do to bring this vitality, economic vitality plan to increase tourism and businesses and jobs to downtown Cusbeay. So we just had a two-hour meeting this morning on it. And we've been meeting regularly on it. There's Zoom meetings, what used to be in-person meetings are now Zoom meetings. So we're all getting used to the Zoom world. But we thank her for all of her input and we're just really glad to have her. The economic vitality, like we talked about briefly. We applied for the Travel Oregon grant for tourism for an economic vitality plan for downtown Cusbeay. And we received the grant in the amount of $20,000. We hired Rural Development Initiatives, partnering with the visitor center, to complete economic vitality plan. In addition to this economic vitality plan, RDI had us be a smart hub in Cusbeay, North Bend. And through these, the smart hub, they've been putting on a number of trainings, like Economic Vitality 101 and other trainings that are in similar vein to economic executive directors throughout all of Oregon. So all these people are coming, but they're basing it on Cusbeay information. So we're learning a lot about Cusbeay and economic vitality. We've been working with RDI and the VCB on the economic vitality plan via Zoom. Our grant has been extended until December 31st, 2020. So we have a little bit more time.
Holly, can you, the next meeting is open for stakeholders in this process of doing this grant. Do you remember the date for that? Because that would be, if you don't, it's okay.
I do. I'm just going to look at my phone real quick.
Can you get that to Roger and he can let the council know? With the 18th?
I mean, of course, my password's not pulling up here.
It's okay. We can, I interrupted you.
You can just send it to me. I'll, we have it shared with the council.
Okay. I believe it was the next, we skipped a Tuesday and then it was the next Tuesday. But it's not pulling up here. Then we have board member Katie Granato with South Coast Family Dentistry. Katie's one of our newer members and she's a member of the promotions committee. But she also graciously is our secretary. So she helps take the notes, which I'm very appreciative of. So the COVID-19 outcomes affecting the CBDA. We did lose revenue from our two major festivals, the Blackberry Arts Festival and the Bay Area Fund Festival, which puts us down about $12,000. We're trying to break even on the farmer's market with half the booth spaces due to COVID-19 social distancing. We're down $10,000 to $15,000. These three events generate income that directly goes to other downtown projects like flower baskets, banners, pre-community events, and more. We did receive a grant from the Oregon Community Foundation regarding COVID-19 losses in the amount of $5,000. We'll also be receiving administrative fees from the revitalization grant in the amount of $12,000. So it has been difficult. We're staying very positive. We've also applied for some PPP through the foundation and we're working through it. And we do want to just say how glad we are to have this partnership that we have with the city and that we couldn't do it without the city. And we really appreciate all your help. With the support of the city, local business owners, community members, and volunteers, we are making a difference in downtown Cusbeay. Thank you.
Well, Holly, I can say for myself, and then we'll get other comments from the councilors, that the Downtown Association is a great partner for us. And you do a wonderful job downtown. And because of you, a lot of businesses will locate here, a lot of things happen. Rob Crocker is a perfect example. I think not just the Buggy Bank, he's also, just him and his partner did the Taoga, Nakoski, and also the Fletcher Building. So, you know, he's very involved in this community. And one of the reasons is because when he came and looked at this area, he was interested in what had been done with the Downtown Association and which we've done, you know, on those type of things in the city. So it's been a great partnership. Unfortunately, you've had some tough situations to deal with this year with COVID-19, as all of us have. It's a new way of doing things and hopefully it'll go away soon. And we can get back to the normality. I've been to the farmer's market. It's great. You do a good job. I see all the vendors behaving as far as following the rules and regulations, the hand washing things. Everyone's out there. And Stephanie even showed us some of the fun masks that were being worn down there. So anyway, I want to personally thank you on behalf of the city. So anyway, councilors, any other comments?
I was just mentioning this weekend how lovely the flower baskets are looking. Really brings a bright spot to the downtown, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for keeping that rolling.
Anyone else? All right.
I was just going to mention that Holly gave a lot of credit to the board members and they do deserve that. But for Holly, it's like herding cats, I'm sure, without Holly and making sure that we're on task on a lot of things. It wouldn't get done. That grant that's going to result in an economic vitality plan for downtown, which will benefit not just the Downtown Association and businesses, but the city as well, is a tool that we all can use. And they had a great response to the surveys that collected a lot of information. And just to pass on to the city and our citizens, some of the positive things that were mentioned through those surveys, the top three things were things that the Cusbeay Downtown Association is already doing. And then, you know, confirmation of what we're doing as a city in our planning for Front Street and other things are going to be, I mean, we're there. We're working in the right direction. And the Downtown Association is very appreciative of the partnership that we have. Hopefully, we'll see some good things soon.
Yeah, you know, I just want to reiterate a little bit with Stephanie. She said, you know, I know we've had some difficult times that we're facing with COVID-19 and it's made tough for everyone. Businesses that are dealing with this on a regular basis, Stephanie and Carmen sit here and know. But you know, there are bright spots, you know? Number, one of them is the Downtown Association. And we keep moving forward. You keep bringing business in here. We're doing Front Street. So there's a lot of good, positive things that are happening. And sometimes I think that we overlooked that during the bad times. We focus on the bad and don't really focus on what we've done and what we've accomplished and where we're moving forward. And I think we need to keep thinking about that. So we have a lot of positive things and you're one of the reasons that we have that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I believe in that we're just, we are reinvigorating downtown. And that in turn reinvigorates Cusbeay as a whole, Cus County and Oregon. It just goes from there. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. The next thing on the agenda is another possibility that sounds really enlightening, I understand. And so I'm looking forward to this presentation on economic development administration grant opportunity. And so who is going to be talking? We have a couple? Two? Three? Okay. All three of you are welcome to speak, however you'd like. So just if you would come forward and give us your name and city where you reside, please. We'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Michael Couch. I reside in Albany, Oregon, so I'm a little ways away today. And I've come today to talk to you about a Department of Commerce grant, which is available to cities and other municipalities. One thing I want to start with, I don't know your exact experience with grants, but I've spoken about lots of different, with different agencies and individuals about grants before. Grants aren't free money. That is a very, very important component to begin with. There are usually strings attached and there are requirements. So please keep that in mind before you start saying, oh, we can spend on this, we can spend on this, we can spend on this. Please bear in mind that there are certain requirements that do need to be met. And usually, whenever there's a handout, it's rarely true. So that being said, grant contracts with federal government are just at their contract. They provide you money, you do something in return. As it so happens, what the federal government wants you to do with this grant is to improve the lives of your citizens by increasing your economic output and intake. So we're going to be reviewing, who I am, just a brief interview, why I have the capacity to speak to you today, a little bit about the grant in question, why it matters to Cusbeay, whether you decide to apply for it yourself or whether you decide to do so as a coalition. Those are important distinctions. What next steps you will take after we're done today. And then a few moments for questions. My name, as I said, is Michael Couch. I am the owner of Financial Legacy Management Company. I have over 20 years of experience in the financial sector, 15 years of that in the banking industry. For the past five years, I decided to head out on my own and help people rather than help an employer. I greatly enjoyed working for the bank industry. It provided me great opportunities to assist people that my employer interested in me helping. That being said, I get to choose my clients now. I am not a salesperson. I'm an educator. I'm here today to provide you with information and not get to sell anything. I'm not asking for a job. I help individuals, small businesses, nonprofits. I've assisted cities. I've assisted individual families. I've assisted colleges, school districts, police departments. I am a business advisor. I'm not a grant writer. I just happen to write grants and I'm pretty good at it. I have been on both sides. I've assisted granting agencies with preparing grants or NOFA's, Notice of Funding Announcements. And then I've also assisted people looking for funds, assisting them with qualifying for grants. So I've seen both sides of it. This particular grant we're discussing today funds annually in October. It's been funding for quite some time now. It's part of a regular annual funding. The funds last throughout the course of the year until they run out, which means that right now, you really don't have much of a chance of qualifying or you wouldn't if the federal government had thrown a whole ton of money into it with the CARES Act. So I suppose out of all the horrible things that happened with COVID, there's a small, tiny benefit, the fact that there's additional funding available. Generally, the awards range from $100,000 to $3 million. Because of the CARES Act, they've actually increased that limit to $30 million, three, zero. So that is specifically for communities and cities that have been affected adversely by COVID. For example, Cusbeay. There is a cost sharing requirement. So that is to say, they will not give you 100% of what you want for whatever projects you have slated. They'll provide you somewhere between 80% to 50% of it. They want you to match them either 20% to 50%. So that is to say, if you have a $5 million project, as long as you're coming in with 2.5 million, know you're set. Although if you guys do qualify, you may only need to come with 1 million. And I did some preliminary reviews and it looks like that you guys may actually qualify based on being in two opportunity zones. Don't quote me on that. We have to double verify. But I believe that you guys can qualify for the 20% match. To give you an idea on how the funds can be used, they're usable for public works, critical infrastructure. So that's roads, traffic signals, if you want to bring in broadband or expand your telecommunications, energy, water, sewer, so basic utilities. Now, that can also be spent on planning, development, fees, and technical assistance. Now, whether that's paid by you or whether you guys want to provide a break to, let's say, a land developer bringing in low-income housing and have this grant pay for his SDCs and filing costs, that's up to you. So this does cover fees. If you think you have a lot of projects that you definitely want to run through but aren't really sure which one to do first, you can actually have this grant cover fees to have specialists come in and do any necessary reporting needed. Funds may be sub-awarded to members of a coalition. So let's say, for example, the city decides to involve the rest of the community. I'm not sure if you guys know it, but you have 126 nonprofits registered in Cusbeay. So, well, it's actually going to increase to 128 because I'm actually hoping to get set up right now. So just, one of the reasons why I was invited here today. Standard government reporting applies. So that is to say, when it comes time to report, you'll feel like you're going to pull your hair out. It's not an easy process. So the key that I always say is make sure you track your funds and have a dedicated group for the reporting purposes ahead of time. Why this particularly matters to Cusbeay? Three things that it can be used for, and I think three things that you guys really could benefit from. Urban renewal, revitalization and retention of business, and economic growth. Specifically, you guys have a strong history of urban renewal. 1968, you guys had your first program and that ran through in 1989. The effect from those 21 years is still seen today. You guys currently have two districts identified for urban renewal. You have your downtown district and you have your empire district. These programs can support you with both, including your waterfront development and streets and infrastructure, your downtown district. And then also, as noted there directly in your guys' file that you have listed, there are two sections identified that you can look at using some of these funds for. Cusbeay has a history of revitalization projects, Egyptian theater and sod improvement grants. You can actually supplement programs like these with funds that are available from the feds. A lot of your tourist economy is adversely affected by COVID that affects your guys' bottom line. You're not receiving as much in lieu of taxes from tourists or business from tourists. And you can actually use COVID funds to help shore some of that up. Economic health, and this is a big and very important one. This is one of the reasons why I think you guys would apply for the 20%. Average income of Cusbeay residents, $27,315 per year. U.S. average, $32,045. That means you guys are about $15,000 underneath, or sorry, $5,000 underneath. Median household income was $43,779 for Cusbeay. U.S. is $59,000. That puts you guys right about $15,000 underneath. 18.6% of your population is within poverty levels. That means almost one out of every five people. And that's a bummer. Where do you think the numbers are now, based on COVID? Do you think that the income has gone up or gone down? Unemployment certainly has gone up. So Cus County had unemployment, or has an unemployment rate of about 12.9 in June compared to 4.9 in 2019. Oregon's average significantly lower. So the question is, if you decide to apply, we have two options. The city can go with this alone and just apply on its own behalf. That gives you all the power, also gives you all the responsibility. So if you decide to go that route, you need to focus on city sponsorship because this is a community-wide grant. You want to identify different projects you have interest in and possibly the ability to sub-gift some of these grant funds. So identify nonprofits in the area or organizations whom you work, school districts, and request from them budgets. So that way, you can include that into the ask. Because this is supposed to be a community-wide program, you'll also want to identify possible donors or projects that the community itself is interested in that you can fund that might not otherwise have been possible. You need to be able to break down your goals and measures as well as timelines. So if you decide that you want to be able to disseminate some of these funds to other entities, you need to say when those funds will be dispersed. Now, with the coalition, you do lose some of the power because you may not even be the entity that's submitting the request. You'll just be part of a group. Now, being the city, you're a big part of the group. But that means that it would include for-profits, nonprofits, government entities, the school district, police department, anybody that could benefit from federal funds for the purpose of improving the welfare of Cusbeay. In general, I would advise the city will act as the principal initiator in that case, which means that you'll be the ones actually submitting the grant. The difference is, you can actually work together with a group of people so the onus isn't just on you to submit the grant request. You can break down the grants and have different group members work on different things. If you have four or five nonprofits and each has an area of expertise, have them focus in that section of the grant. The funds can be used for prospective and used for coalition building. So the idea is, if you know that meeting with these folks can take significant man-hours, So the idea is, if you know that meeting with these folks can take significant man-hours, you can actually budget for that, hire another person on the board specifically to handle your grant writing. You can hire, you can pay wages or give money to nonprofits so they can pay wages for executive directors. So that way all of you can meet without having to affect anybody's bottom line. And that can be included directly in with the grant. So goals and benchmarks are imperative if you work with a coalition because if you do act as the principal initiator, it'll be your responsibility to do all the reporting. Therefore, whatever I encourage an entity to act as a principal initiator, I encourage memorandums of understanding, MOUs, which are friendly handshake contract that says, we're going to do this, but you have to do this. That way there's no question, there's no misunderstanding. Everybody, if you guys are acting as a principal initiator, you'll want to make sure that they get their reporting to you so you can compile everything and send it off in the next time. Next steps, you need to figure out if this is something that you want to pursue. The nice thing is, because this is a rolling submission period, you don't have to decide that today. You don't have to decide it tomorrow. You don't have to decide it this quarter or even this year. My objective is to make sure that this is available to you, that you know that it's out there because unfortunately, a lot of people like me don't spend a lot of time in small cities. I'm in a small city. My office is in Lebanon, which is just about the same size as you guys. So I understand that there is usually a complete oversight when it comes to information getting to where it's really needed, and that's small cities. If you decide that you want to pursue this grant, you need to figure out if you want to apply for it solo, which means you guys accept all the responsibilities, or if you want to do it as a coalition, which will then allow you to spread out those responsibilities and involve more of the community. We need to make sure that you have an ask created. You need to know what it is you want and need to make sure that if you have coalition members, that they know what they want because the last thing you want to do is be running around at the last minute before you're ready to submit and three people aren't sure what they want to ask for. Doesn't help much. And then delegate responsibilities. If you guys are going to go it out alone, you need to make sure that you have a group specifically focused for this. If you're going to work in a coalition, you need to make sure that everybody who's part of the coalition has their responsibilities down. So you never want to figure out who's supposed to doing this. You should have a clear and concise list of whose responsibility is what. Questions?
Lot of information. I mean, where we go from here, I know you've had a conversation with Roger, and so I think it's something that we're just going to have to process. And so, and I appreciate you coming forth and giving us this information. I think there's a lot of possibility here for us. It's just how do we approach it? What projects do we decide to go with and, and the community decide to go with? So there's a lot of options out there from your presentation that's to understand.
Certainly. I mean, I've spent the whole day down here speaking with nonprofits and folks in the community to try to get an understanding of what's needed. And obviously with, so it sounds like you have a lot of great collection, collective groups of nonprofits here who are looking to do good. I mean, we had some of them in here already, and I know the last presenter, it sounds like they're doing some major good, and they've fallen right in line with a grant like this. They may be someone you're interested in tapping for information. But the idea is, and this is a very nebulously worded grant, it's, it's not very specific. The guideline is, if it improves your economy, so if it stimulates job, if it encourages trade, so anything ranging from tourism or if you want to focus more on building, you can look at construction, programs that teach vocational schools, training, you can look at SWAC, you can look at the school district if you guys need additional funds for COVID safety for your students. So you actually have a very wide scope. And what I would say is, if you are interested in pursuing this, I'd be happy to volunteer some time to help you guys get in touch with the program administrator. She's out of Seattle. And then once you kind of have an idea of what you want to do, we can give her a call and say, you know, this is what Coos Bay is looking at doing. Does this meet your guidelines? What suggestions would you make? The nice thing about the, about the Department of Commerce is they're very friendly and open to dialogue. So they're good folks with the door.
That's great. So is there a timeframe on this? And is there an overall, overall amount that's going to be allocated throughout the country?
So there's a few things to note as far as timeframes. As I mentioned, it's a rolling grant, so they review them on a monthly basis. And it's not very competitive. It's just while there's money, if you meet all the guidelines and score well enough, they're going to throw money at you, again, with strings attached. But the idea is that you will have the best chance of applying right after they fund, which is to say, October. If you wait till, let's say, June of next year, you probably won't have a whole lot of luck. But again, there's also the possibility that with this next round of, of COVID support that's hopefully making its way through the government, that they will probably put more funds into this. Right now, they already threw in enough funds that they're able to increase the limit to 30 million instead of 3 million. That will probably last through next May, if not longer, but usually it's on a one-year cycle. And May 7th is when they increase the funding this year. So I would say that if you are looking to apply and you are looking for more than 3 million, you'll probably want to put in an application before May 7th of next year, or ideally right around mid-October.
Lots, lots to digest.
I've got a quick question. So would each project be a separate ask? Or do you just say, we'd like to accomplish all of these things and make a list and have a total?
Counselor, it's a very good question. What I would advise in that regard is you provide a full list of your programs, say, this is, this is our initiative. This is what we're looking to do. Here's item 1, 2, 3, 4, 23, 24, 25. The main reason for that is because they're going to take a look at the total dollar amount. And if, let's say, for example, you want to do road improvements and you've already set aside money for that in the budget, that already counts as part of your contribution. So if you say, these are all the road construction projects you want to do, and you've already funded two-thirds of them, well, you can easily throw in the rest of them using federal funds and still have a little of a match left over for another three or four projects. So you'd budget the entire amount, and then when it comes time to, to do your justification, you have it split into categories and then provide the specific projects in your justification. That can also help if you have nonprofits that you'd like to support in the area and they don't have a match. Any amount that you guys have put forth towards the project up and above that match, you can then provide to other coalition members and vice versa.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate it, Michael. So I know you've been contacted, as I said, the full city manager, and I know Roger was very interested in it. And our finance director, I'm sure, would be interested in something like this where he's putting a lot on her and come up with our financial needs and wants. And so anyway, so Roger, I guess we just leave it to you to follow up and proceed with it?
Yeah, I've actually attempted to reach out to the tribe. I think there's a tremendous opportunity, some potential projects. As Michael has shared, I think we get some bonus points if it's in an opportunity zone, and we do have an opportunity zone in Empire. And we have a project out there that we work with the Confederate Tribe on, and it's possibility that there might be some things that we could put together that would alleviate some burden to the city and to the tribe to help make that project go further. And there's many other projects as well.
Okay.
I'm really interested to see if we could fund a library.
I'm kind of interested to see too, if we might be able to help, and the name ran away, ORCA.
Yep.
With housing solutions for homeless.
ORCA is the, I believe, is the continuum of care for this area, correct?
Community. No, that's just health.
Okay. So if you're dealing with homeless, especially if it's a wraparound services, so if they offer bring additional services to low-income housing, then that does qualify on this program.
Okay.
I just got finished doing a low-income housing project in Lebanon, about 15 minutes away from me, so that's fresh in my mind.
So is this something that we can also do on the Eaglewood project?
Well, I think it's possible, especially since we're going to have match, and so is the county, where we've acquired the property and we're doing the cleanup work.
Right.
And then gifting it over to ORCA for low-income housing and a head start.
Great.
It sounds like it fits.
So there seems like a lot of possibilities here.
And it meets, it's geared towards a underserved and needy community. So I think there's lots of opportunities. I'm also intrigued with broadband build-out.
Yep.
Well, wouldn't it be great to have broadband build-out in an opportunity zone up there?
The other thing is, if you're not opposed to holding off on some of the ORCA projects, on a yearly basis, HUD provides a good neighborhood choice program specifically focused on low-income housing. You can look at a couple of options.
Well, Michael, thank you. You've been a wealth of information and some opportunities that are going to be available to us and these funds that hopefully we'll be able to access and make some benefits.
And I hope you make good use of them.
Thank you so much for coming down. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
So Rick, or Sam, either one of you or both of you want to speak?
I'd rather Michael to explain all of this. For me, it was a, we just started a new nonprofit called Oregon Coast Artisan Trade Education Collective. And the goal is to teach trades and arts in the area to work with SOEV and worker training and help entrepreneurs. On our board, we have John Bacon, who's Executive Director of the SBDC. We've got Kyle Stevens, Ally McGeehan, and several others that, the whole goal is to be able to raise education in the trades, to help the trade sector, and we have a, you know, a big lack in people that can fix things and, and work on your home and those type of things. So the goal is to start teaching those trades and also give kids an opportunity to do something other than go to college and where there is a real career rather than just to serve the sector. My vision is seeing more manufacturing. I think we're a little too heavy on tourism, and I think we need ways to export goods, import money to this area. And that's on a more, less seasonal basis, you know, year-round. And so we're looking at several ways to do that in different places. We've been working with the Coos Bay Boat Building Center to start teaching those classes to kind of develop some traction and, and show that we can do that here. And then the goal is, if we can grow it to the size that I want, to explore sustainable materials and recycled material, so like injection molding with recycled plastics and developing products and materials using more sustainable materials like hemp and bamboo, things that grow in a year instead of 25 years. And so, in a nutshell, he's kind of the guy behind the scenes that makes it all happen. And then, you know, I'm kind of the guy that's dreaming, how far can we go with it? We're looking at buying a facility that's got the space that we can locate almost everything on site. And I see that as a, as a great way to kind of tie in with everything that we already have, like a SWAC and Marine Institute, a place, a source of education for higher ed and trades and bring people to the area rather than export our youth.
Thank you, Rick. Great vision, and I'm glad that you're willing to take it on. I said, great vision, and thank you for wanting to take it on. Sam?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this is a really exciting opportunity, and I'm heavily engaged in this conversation. More recently, we have, we've been working hard to organize some nonprofits like we've talked about. I'm a board member with the Coos Bay Boat Building Center, and, and they stand to receive some funding for upgrades there in the capacity to serve OCA Tech's mission as well. And with OCA Tech, I highly support the transition to a trade school community. I think that our community is well-tuned to, to trade schools and learning those skills since, since primary and general education is kind of in question and how they're moving forward. I think this is a great opportunity to, to move that forward. And then with Ocean, we formally organized this morning, and that is the Oregon Coast Energy Alliance Network. And I would like to read what that is. The Oregon Coast Energy Alliance Network is a cross-cultural, community-based organization with the initial mission to explore the opportunities and challenges of floating offshore wind energy. We believe that our coastal interests should be front and center in shaping what offshore wind projects might look like. As offshore wind has been recognized globally, as Saudi Arabia off the, off the coastline here, we are getting a lot of attention globally from, from these big industry players. And so we have organized Ocean in order to have a voice and representation of our community at that table so that we're not stomped on by industry, but that we do this in a sustainable and responsible way. With that being said, there is a lot of room in the history of my time here in Coos Bay and the different conversations that I've been in, room for upgrading the boardwalk. I remember that there was a Parks Commission. We spent some time on that and recognizing what we need to do to upgrade the boardwalk and make that safer and more accessible, even with the commercial dock space. I think that there's room within this grant for that. In the waterfront heritage district, there's the parking lot that you guys have been getting ready to, to put in there. And the community bike shop stands to, to benefit from this as well, to quantify their, their mission goals. And I am personally interested in the ironworks building for, for restoration before it falls into the bay and, and maintaining public access for that, that tourism capacity as well as developing my art further within that building. And then Coos Machine Shop, they could also stand to benefit from this grant as they, they have been after a crane dock so that they can further service marine vessels. And then I do support a coalition, and that, and I'm willing to, to offer everything that I have to, to, to talk to those folks and to line item these things in, in the creation of this grant proposal. So I don't know if it's, if it's within my abilities here to, to, to accelerate this and ask the council to make a motion to explore this grant opportunity so that, so that we can begin this conversation.
So I don't know. Roger, you want to give us some input on that? I mean, do we need a motion?
Actually, I don't think you need to make a motion. I think staff's already looking into it, reaching out to the tribe already. And obviously, I, I believe that the more players we get involved, the better chance we are of getting funded. Although I believe that our finance director would tell us, as the principal grant requester, the more people that are involved, the more dicey it comes for us in accountability.
So instead of a motion, but we can get a consensus. Does the council support this, you know, moving forward in this way? And the grant opportunities and the direction that they're going with? I mean, I think they're all wonderful, Sam. I mean, and with the mention by everyone, I mean, I, I don't know why we, anyone wouldn't support this. And I think they're great ideas and great concepts. Getting there is going to be the goal. And I think that if there's anything that we can do as a city to participate, I think we'd be interested. Stephanie agree?
Yeah, I, I would support this. Just in the surveys that we received information about, in the economic vitality meeting today, there was discussion how we're losing our younger people leaving the area. And I like, I really like what Rick and Sam have said about how this could create an opportunity to keep some of those, and, and looking at different ways of how we do business here and not just focused on one thing, but a variety.
Is Rob, Rob, you got any questions on this? Comments? Support?
No, it seems like a great opportunity, and I think we should explore the options that we have. I'd like to see some more detail on what projects might be available.
Yeah, I think staff can move forward with that once we, you know, we've, this has been broached by us and our support. And so I think council, I mean, staff will come back with some suggestions and interact with the individuals that are here this evening. Is that a great, I mean?
I think it is, and I think we could start out with asking both Rick and Sam to give us some ideas on, some outline on, on projects that they're considering and some costs related to those projects.
And then you always have Michael who had volunteered his services, and so anytime someone volunteers, I don't think we ever turn it down.
We're lucky to have them. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Great. Thank you so much. It's great to hear. That's another one of these positive things moving forward. It's always nice that we're moving in a positive direction. So next item is consideration of approval for amendment to the two-way of Jacobs' operation. So Jim, I presume this is going to be you?
Jacobs is the city's water operations finance contractor. Annually provides us an outlook on what our budget for repairs should be in the coming year. This past fiscal year, the budget for repairs was $179,693. And also, there's a 12% and the added on this for the total of $212,003. This is documented, amendment two. Jacobs has authorized to manage repairs utilized budget from the repair plus $75,000. When the city received the invoice for repairs for March, June, the invoice was received in July. It was discovered that Jacobs had conceded the budget for all this past fiscal year. Repair budget was conceded by $33,000. The city does not want Jacobs to determine our future years Jacobs and staff together on the future. To be agreed upon budget or revenue, the city sooner or later staff. Cash flow. Maybe to do so, staff have been approved in the two days. The amount of $33,000, $100,000. And this will increase the repair budget to $179,693, $208,207. And we got a paper on the readers, Jacobs.
So counsel, you've heard the request by staff, and we have someone from Jacobs if there is online, if we have any questions. So I'd ask any questions from counsel on this item? Thank you for joining us. I don't. I mean, this seemed pretty straightforward. Unfortunately, there's an increase on these type of things, but it does happen. Unfortunately, there's an increase on these type of things, but it does happen. And so, it's something that I think that we have an obligation to do.
So, just for clarification, this is for fiscal year 2020, this, this Amendment Two-A?
That's correct.
So, we're, the expense has already been made. We're just catching up.
I would tell you, this is a housekeeping issue, and I think we've had good discussions with Efron. The reality is, the repair budget for the last several years has gone unchanged, spent the same amount. I would tell you, even though the city is disheartened that we didn't stay within the budget, at the same point, we're happy that money's being spent to keep the plant upgraded. And we're, we've had discussions about the reality of the fact that we need to increase that budget line item, especially with Plant One, which is an older plant that needs more work. So, I mean, it's, it's good and bad, but we're happy that they did the work that needed to be done to keep the plant up and running. It's just, it makes it easier for accounting purposes if we're keeping a little closer track so that we're not at the end of the budget year saying, we need this amendment.
So, this catches up 2020, have we budgeted additional? I know that that has been a concern of staff, that budget line hadn't changed.
So, we are currently-
So, it is good news.
Yeah, we are currently negotiating, and I know Efron, Jennifer have spent many hours together negotiating, and Jim and I have joined in on several occasions, and I think we're getting close to bringing back something for your consideration. Efron's pushing hard to meet some scope requirements that we're doing, and we're pushing back because the price is going way up. So, I, I think you have some hard discussions coming up in regards to that. I would be remiss if I did not share that Jacobs has made a lot of improvements, especially in the Sledge Lagoon, that made great progress in trying to rectify something that's gotten a little out of hand over years past in a time when Efron wasn't the VP at Jacobs.
Well, that's good to hear.
So, I'm not sure if that gets me any brownie points towards reducing our contract, Efron, but I am working on that. You keep it close to the chest, huh? Okay, so council, how would you like to proceed on this?
I'll make a motion that we approve Amendment Two-A for an amount of $33,720.98.
Second?
Second? Okay. Any other comments by anyone? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. All right. Thank you for joining us. Award number seven, award of construction contract for Tide View Terrace Storm Drain Replacement Project. This is one of those on the plant repairs, right?
That's correct.
It could be a smaller amount.
So, city staff have been monitoring this area, storm drain road conditions like high through Seabreeze Terrace and Lake Court for several years. And based on the last inspection, the storm drain pipe has determined to be poor condition and causing significant deficiencies to road surface itself. If this project's not constructed, there's potential for significant adverse impact to that road. Due to the fact that this project has challenges such as depth, conflicts with other utility, groundwater and underground springs, just to name a few, it was decided that we should have this engineered by one of our local engineering firms, and that was the Dire Partnership. They have finished, they finished the plans and specifications, and due to budgetary constraints, the project was divided into two plan sets. So, right now, what you have before you is just Tide View Terrace itself. We have plans and specifications on the shelf now for Seabreeze Terrace and Lake Court, and its budget allows it. We'll do that in the next, just next calendar year. If not, we'll have to wait till next fiscal year and probably do it about this time next year. So, bids came in last week, and Lasky Clifton Corporation was a low bid at $371,122. And the engineer's estimate was between $340,000 and $440,000. So, we're pretty close to the engineer's estimate there, or in the ballpark. And there's a map included in your report that shows the location of the pipes in the project area. And if there's any questions, not any questions, that concludes my report.
Questions, anyone?
If I could provide some clarification, when we categorize something as an unplanned or emergency, what we're really saying is it's not on the takedown list that was developed in 2007, 2008 through an agreement with DEQ. Didn't mean we didn't, it doesn't mean we don't know about it, doesn't mean there, there are other, a list of, and a host of other deficiencies in the system, that parts of it are, are over 80 years old. So, it just means it comes out of a different fund than it's been, used to be labeled as emergency, and we said, well, no, let's change that. They're just not, they're not planned, they're not on that CIP. And so, that's, that's how it gets to theirs. You're going to find, and I'll, I'll share in my report, that we have a number of projects coming up. And that's because we do have funds setting aside to do these so that we can continue improving the health of our system.
Okay.
So, Jim, I have, if I may, I just have a quick question. That subdivision was done in the 80s. We've got pipes that are a whole lot older than those. Why is this-
Well, this is an interesting design, that, that pipe. It's made with corrugated metal pipe, so it, it's subject to corrosion, so it's corroded. And it was perforated. And so, yes, it's perforated pipe, which is, well-
So, we shouldn't have allowed that, is what you're saying?
Yeah. It was, it was a poor design.
Okay.
And so, the pipe degradation accelerated way beyond what's typical.
Well, that, that makes sense. I was just wondering, because, you know, that, we've got stuff that's a whole lot older than that and still functioning.
Where's this at?
Off the lake shore.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah. You're right.
Most of those houses were built in the 80s.
So, is this something that this, that Michael came and talked about as a grant that we could do, since we're putting this in, would it be available for Seabreeze?
I'm not sure that that would fall within that. You might have some better opportunities looking at other improvements, maybe even asking for some funds towards Plant One.
Great idea. Okay, any other comments, questions? Or would you like to proceed, council?
I am moved we award the Tide View Terrace Storm Drain Replacement Project to Lasky Clifton Corporation for $371,122, plus authorize a 15% contingency, the total not to exceed
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so, seconded. So, it's been moved in second to award the Tide View Terrace Storm Drain Replacement Project to Lasky Clifton. Any other comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rob, are you on there?
I said aye.
I heard something, but I heard it from the back there.
Okay.
Don't know if I messed it up by-
You might, you might have cut him off.
PowerPoint.
I can see that. That means, City Manager's report, he is ready to go. Roger, you're up.
So, I mean, always happy to report good things. You approved a number of street improvements using transportation utility fees earlier, I guess I would call this summer, or the beginning of the summer. And those ones with the check marks are all done, and Marple is the last one. In talking with Randy Dixon today, he believes we're at 60% or better, and it could be done within two weeks. From here, then we'll be jumping on to some pothole repairs. I expect that we'll be coming back to you maybe at the next meeting for, to approve contract. I expect the cost for potholes, the money that we're spending is going to exceed $75,000, so that will require your approval. Safe Routes for Schools project, I sent you an update earlier, but it's kind of nice to see what's happening. Number of components of that project have been completed. The, you can see the new sidewalk in front of the new school on Second. There are sidewalks on both sides of Sixth Avenue going from H Street towards Ismus Loop Bridge. And then the retaining walls in between E and D Streets on Coos River Highway are in so that they can continue sidewalks in front of those. They're, they're making good progress, given what's happening with the pandemic. Fairly certain the sidewalk project will be done before schools can be occupied. At least, I believe for the most part. I should be knocking on some wood here. Fourth Street Capitol Improvements, that's been a project in the making for several years. Of course, you approved the design, you approved and allowed us to go out for financing. Nicole was instrumental in securing the financing for that and moving forward. And then you approved awarding a contract for the development. There's been a lot of work down on, on Fourth Street lately, and I'll remind you that we worked with the Coos Bay North Bend Water Board to combine projects. They're replacing an old water main. That's what the project's been focused on right now. They're just about finished putting that water line, and then they'll transition on, over to the road. Exactly what? I'm probably not the person to answer that, but I'm sure they're going to be tearing things up.
Did they find some unexpected things under the asphalt? I noticed some tree trunks and root systems and stuff like that.
Well, actually, I wouldn't be surprised. That's really not that uncommon.
Yeah, I haven't heard that, but I would not be surprised at all.
But Stephanie's right. I mean, I walk down there a lot, and there's these big tree roots, and maybe it's just part of the tree that we don't see up above, but I don't know. But anyway, it seems pretty massive on some of the stuff.
We know from doing some exploratory drills on Coos Bay Boulevard that that, that ravine is full of root wads that have deteriorated, and that's causing some of the slippage in the road. This week, we've got some striping coming on. Now, we don't do the striping. We partner with ODOT, but there's a number of sections that have been identified to occur later this week up there. And we sent out a press release today, and that'll probably be in the, probably updated as well.
Right. Lot of good things.
We have a, you just approved one, but we have a number of sewer and stormwater mainline replacement projects. One you've already approved is the bundle projects for out in Empire. And tonight, you did Tide View Terrace. Next week, we'll have, or excuse me, in two weeks, we'll have all the bids in for North 12th Street, some bundle projects with H Street Sewer and Second Street Sewer and Third Street to commercial storm drain and Anderson Storm Drain. Then we have the Myrtle Storm Drain and the Philbert and 17th Storm Drain. So, lots, this is the season for projects.
What section of North 12th is that?
I'm, I'm afraid I cannot answer that to you, for you, but I'm not sure Jim can.
I can't remember, because I'm getting confused with my 10th, with something that we were doing on 10th, so I can't help you.
I was just, I was just curious about it.
I can tell you that we met with department, our department managers from Public Works yesterday for, no, that was today. And it seemed like it almost went two hours, and we were going over the projects in the streets and parks, the projects in engineering, which is wastewater, stormwater, a retaining, or not a retaining wall, but a seawall out in Empire, and then projects for community development, and then projects that Building Coats is working on. It's extremely long, and I can tell you, it's probably, if every, you put everything together, it's probably more than 20 pages, and most of the pages are 17 by 11, and it's small print. So, I actually have to bring my glasses for those.
Looks like a lot going on.
Yeah.
It is.
No, there is. I mean, the city's doing a lot of infrastructure, a lot of building, a lot of street repairs, and plus all the businesses that are coming in, things are happening. I mean, there is a lot going on. I don't know, can you remember any time that we've had this kind of projects on the books and infrastructure being done?
Not since I've been here in 15 years.
Yeah. That's great. It's good news. All right. One of those positive things.
Bids are due tomorrow, and I suspect that we'll be coming back. I hopefully will be coming back to you at your next meeting to award a contract for our tree harvest. We do a tree harvest every two years between us and the Coos Bay North Bend Water Board. I believe we have just about 3,000 acres, and we do a sustained yield harvest plan, and it is our turn up. We were going to forego that, it's not in the budget, but timber prices have turned around, and we've got advice from our Timber Management Consultant to strike while the iron's hot.
And so, if you would inform the citizens and ourselves, again, just to reiterate, whatever we receive from this, we put into a special fund to fire, to support purchases of fire equipment, police equipment, Public Works equipment. It's kind of specialized in that. It doesn't go into the operating.
It generally has to be capital equipment. It has to be over a certain dollar amount, and it has to last for more than five years.
I can tell you the amount of time that I've been on the council, this is, we're very fortunate and unique to have this. A lot of cities don't, and because of it, it allows us to keep our, you know, facilities or, or trucks and that kind of equipment updated, and, and, you know, they rotate them out. A lot of times, that's not the case for other cities, and so, I think we're very fortunate to have this.
And then, some of you may have noticed that we had an arborist come down and remove a tree in front of the Coos Art Museum. Now, all the trees are gone in front of the Coos Art Museum. That's for two reasons. One, many of those trees are over 50 years old. When they were put in, those Armstrong maples were the wrong Armstrong maples. It was a process decades ago to use those trees, and many of those had surface root systems, and we are now using a different Armstrong maple that actually goes down, and there's a process in which to use. Our other problem here is this sidewalk needs to be replaced. So, we are moving forward. I know Randy worked and got bids to replace this sidewalk, including the ADA ramp, which is not correct, doesn't meet any ADA standards. Also, sections of sidewalk on Second, on, on both sides, so that we can continue on in our path to repair sidewalks in the downtown. We're trying to budget, and you have approved, over the last couple of years, $80,000 a year, and we're going to just keep working incrementally and replace sidewalks that need to be replaced because of tree-related issues.
And some of these have been scheduled earlier than this year. I mean, they're on the budget to be paid for, but they just haven't been able to get to it correct.
Yeah, we actually, these sidewalks were supposed to be replaced two years ago, but the council took some action, and, and I'm glad you did. But that was to address street maintenance, and the reality is, we only have so many employees.
Right.
And so, what we're doing with this, instead of our employees actually doing the, most of the tear out, we're going to contract that out so our employees can continue working on streets. If not, we're just not going to get these projects done.
Yes. Okay.
So, and that, that concludes my PowerPoint report I would share with you, that our current agreement with the Coos Bay Downtown Association has expired. It was a, actually, I think it ended up being a four-year agreement. And we've been working on successor agreement, and that has been completed. I'll be meeting with the Downtown Association Executive Director and the President, I'm hoping later this week or early next week, and I'm hoping to bring something back to you for your consideration.
Okay. Anything else? Good report, and we got Rob back.
I actually have a question, if that's okay.
Of course.
Roger, I, I drove Coos Bay Boulevard for the first time since it got repaired, and it's in fantastic condition. I appreciate that. But I, I remember the scope of the project being, it was going to be striped from the city limits to Highway 101, and it looks like they only striped it to Teakwood. Is that one of the striping projects that's coming up to finish that?
There is a striping project on the list, and it is part of Ocean, or Coos Bay Boulevard, and I was told-
And I was told it was not in the area we just did, it was going to be going south. That was a clarification I got at our meeting today. So I'm not sure if it's going all the way to 101 or not.
Okay, thank you.
Did you know, Jim?
Well, it's my understanding it's supposed to go to 101, but I can find out and then let the council know tomorrow.
Okay, we agree. Then I guess the council will be down there finishing it off, right? Rob?
This is the downside of having so many projects.
Right.
That we're having to parcel them out to different people to manage them.
I got it, no, it's good, it's very good, good news, good things. Council comments, Stephanie?
I only had one, I was pleased as I was running, chasing my daughter's dog out in the Inglewood District to see the signage that announced that those were our tough fees that improved the road up behind her house. And I appreciate that our staff has done that to let the public know that this is their money at work in our community. And again, also, just to make it quick, how much I appreciate the time that you invest in all of the things that are happening in the city. And I know you're all very busy, but you do try to give as much attention to details and the citizens who are approaching our city with concerns, and I appreciate that.
Thanks, Stephanie. Phil?
I don't really have much, I communicated with Roger this morning about some issues that I'm sure they'll be taking care of. I really don't have, I'm just happy to see so much going on, you know? It's, the pandemic is bad news and you hear that all day long, every day. And it's good to see that we're still progressing and getting projects completed, so kudos to staff. Thank you for doing all that.
Carmen?
Let's see here. I also want to echo the amount of work that's been going on through city staff and all of the other nonprofit organizations that are working hard during this very difficult time, still pushing forward, trying to make the city a better place. And that work does not go unnoticed by the council. So it is, it is great to see all the projects that are moving forward and all the things that we are trying to improve. That being said, I know that, you know, due to some of the comments that we heard today from the public, that not everybody feels that we are doing enough. One question was asked how we could prevent violence. And I think that one way is to communicate any potential threats, worries, fears. And I want to say thank you to Deputy Chief Chapinar for being an open ear. I think that that is very important moving forward, that you are accessible and that people feel that you can be reached. And I appreciate you taking those calls. And I think that that's one way that we can all feel better is to communicate what are the worries and hopefully make people safer because, you know, fear dwells in darkness, you know, in the darkness. And if we bring things out to the light, then maybe we can all feel a bit safer. Also, the idea of a sub-community committee, I think is an interesting idea. I am interested in maybe discussing more about bringing in more representation to the decisions that we make here at the city. I believe that this council does a pretty good job of flagging any part of the community that might be left out in a decision. I feel that all of us represent different parts of the community and recognize different parts of the community and our daily roles. And I think, I would like to commend my fellow council members on what I have observed as making sure that we address and acknowledge certain parts of the community that might be struggling in our deliberations. So that doesn't mean that we can't do a better job. I think that we always have more to learn. So I'm an open ear to potential ideas. And I think that's, once again, hitting on that communication bell. Communication is the key in my opinion, so. Other than that, I'm really excited to see the back half of 2020 and all the great things that we're doing and see our roads improved and Front Street being developed. I'd love an update on that at some point, with the traffic signal coming in and such. We can do that later, but there's a lot going on and I'm excited to be here and have a seat at the table and be able to listen and convey some of my own thoughts, so, thank you.
You're right, I just want to, you know, piggyback on some of your comments and you can chime in, Carmen, because this was some of your suggestions was that we have a listening session with our constituents. You felt it was really important since we are limited to what we do have with COVID-19. And so we developed a listening and learning, you know, session that we discussed on having. We wanted to put that together and have it on a weekly basis. And we ran into some snags and what the snag is and what people need to understand. And I know people come forth and want to sit down and meet with them, but by state law, by the governor, we cannot do that under COVID-19. So we've been trying to find ways to facilitate this and still address the community. And so what we've come up with in my Friday update in a letter, I wanted to reference, and this was an idea from the council that we went forward on, that they can, which was, we got some comments from. I hope you get a chance to access this. We have something online where they can go on a weekly basis or daily basis and interact and put their comments in there, where we can combine these comments and then we can address them. And we have an independent group handling this for us. I want the public to realize that this is going to be handled by them and then combined where we can facilitate it. At some point in time, when we can meet and sit down with the public, this is something I definitely would like to do, I know Carmen has an interest in doing it and I know the other councillors also have an interest in doing it. So I think it's something that we want to do, but sometimes our hands are tied. And in this case, I'm sorry, COVID-19 is very real and very out there and I would have a problem in not listening to the governor's mandate. So that's my problem and I try to, I'm going to, I'm just going to make that comment now. I mean, it's hard. And I know that it's difficult for the constituents that come forth and want to sit down and want to talk. I understand their frustration, but anyway, it's not something that goes on deaf ears. We're trying to accommodate the best we can. Do you want to reiterate anything on that?
Well, I'd like to reply, I did bring to the council that I thought a listening session would be a helpful thing. And that idea did come from Jay Brown in one of our many conversations that we've had.
Right.
And I thought it was a great idea because I was feeling the same thing. I was feeling disconnected from the community at a time when I feel the community needed to hear from us. And unfortunately, there is a lot of hoops to jump in order to have us be able to take public comments. First of all, we all have to be in the same room. We can't draft languages without, and, you know, have meetings without being in the public forum. But we also have to advertise that we are going to have a public meeting. So there's like all these steps that I'm still learning about. And during the pandemic, it made all of this a lot harder for me because I did want to be able to be accessible and I did want to address the community and I feel that all of us did. It was just a very difficult time and kind of a perfect storm for a lot of those reasons. So I just wanted to give credit where credit was due, that Jay brought that idea to me and I relayed it. So it wasn't solely my idea.
No, and I think this whole council wants to do it, and I think there's ways to do it. We don't have to make it a public meeting, but to even facilitate sitting down with a group of people, whoever it may be, we still have these restrictions that we cannot meet under the guidelines. So hopefully at some point in the near future, COVID will be under control and we can get back to doing some of these things that we want to do and interact with the public. I'm pleased that we're back meeting in person and it's not all virtual, you know, even though some are virtual, but at least people have a place to comment instead of us doing it all from virtual. So I think that helps with the connection a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Carmen?
Nope.
Drew?
Good.
Two parts to address, the first part, piggybacks on Carmen's point. I feel like there was amongst some of the presenters today, a sense that there has been no interaction with any city staff, any councillors. And I know that's not accurate, as Carmen noted, these had interactions with some folks. I know I've been happy to interact with Jay, with Cameron, with Tristan when they've had questions of procedures or how to go about things. Information they've relayed to me, I've relayed on to staff. So I've been happy to be able to facilitate conversations of that type when they've come up and when it was something that I could interact with. I know one of our public comments today was concerned with Soraya Reese, young black woman in prison right now. Lot of backstory there, but in a nutshell, I've interacted with her mom. I put her in contact with a lobbyist out of Salem to try and work on some mental health legislation so that those situations don't happen again. That's another thing that's being treated as though no one's interacted with it, that's not the case. And on to the second point, it was brought up, and this part bothered me a little, as though with the representation at this council, we can't relate to situations in the broad spectrum of BIOPIC or LGBTQ community. I know Lucinda identifies as a person of color, she's not here today. And I don't talk a lot about my personal life, but related to that point, prior to my monogamous marriage, I was a member of the LGBTQ community. I went to high school at North Bend as a member of that community. I received threats, I received death threats, I had my car vandalized in my driveway. These are things that I can relate to. It's not something I talk a lot about, but that assumption was bothersome to me. So I wanted to dispel that assumption at this point. And if there were to be a committee or a group to put together these different communities, talk about solutions, I would be happy to be a representative to that group. But I think it's important we not jump to conclusions from any standpoint.
Thank you, Drew, and thank you for sharing, appreciate it. Anything else? Rob, comments?
Nope.
We hung our bones.
My mistake. Well, I'll start with a feel-good story. Last week, my wife was out for her walk with the dog and she ran into a situation where bumblebees were involved and in the melee, she lost her phone. And this was down by the library somewhere. And we went down, looked for it and couldn't find it. And that evening, three homeless individuals showed up at our doorstep with their phone and all her two debit cards that were in there and her ID. And so I just want to thank those individuals publicly for being honest and bringing that back to us. Secondly, I want to commend the Cus Bay Library staff and the volunteers that serve on the library board. They've been working really hard to provide the highest level of service possible during this pandemic. When it first broke out, they started mailing out material. And now they're providing curbside pickup Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, eleven to one or three to five. And they now have sixty-minute computer appointments. Mondays and Wednesdays, eleven to twelve or three to four appointments are required for those. And they've also started limited browsing on Tuesdays and Thursdays, three to five. So I just want to commend Sammy and her staff and, like I said, the volunteers on the board because they're doing the best they can to provide the highest level of service. And that's all I have.
Rob? Just a few comments. First of all, I think it's a special session for the legislature starting on the tenth, which is this Friday, right? And so a couple, one of the things that's coming up, and hopefully it will meet the cut, the shutter creep won't be shut down. And I know that Roger testified and letters were sent on our behalf supporting them not doing that. And Roger even went a little bit above that and came up with some suggestions and why and lined that out. And we had So Webb and some others that presented letters and stuff, I'm very pleased about that. I also heard there's a possibility that the 1.8% will be put on this special session for the tax and that might be reconsidered, which would be a benefit to the state in helping do some promotions and tourist things. But anyway, and then I will end on, I wanted to say again, Deputy Chief Chapinar, thank you so much for interacting the way you did, taking the phone calls and giving us the report and all the hard work that the police do on these matters. And I know it's really trying and difficult, so I appreciate that. And all the staff, all the hard work you've done, have done and are doing and how much we have in front of us. That's the end of my comments and I get to turn this over to Stephanie now.
All right, so do we need to take a break or do you want to continue on?
I got a break, but you guys can continue on.
Should we take a five-minute?
Yeah, that sounds good.
We'll take a five-minute break.
I need to ease this. I need these. Stand. I don't mind.
All right, we're going to call the August 4 Coos Bay Urban Renewal Agency meeting to order, and our first item on the agenda is public comments. Did you have a comment? All right, so we'll move on to item number two, which is the consent calendar, which includes the July 7 minutes and the June 2020 financial reports.
Make the motion, will we approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of a contract to replace floats in Empire Boat Launch. Are you taking this, Jim?
Yes, ma'am. At the May 19 URA meeting, staff reported that eight of the floats at the Empire Boat Ramp had failed, creating a need for emergency replacement, and the agency authorized staff to proceed with replacement under the city's emergency procurement rule. Therefore, staff worked with the Oregon State Marine Board to create a design detail for aluminum floats and then received bids from three manufacturers to fabricate the floats. The low bid is KG Manufacturing, an amount of $126,344.12. What we're asking tonight is kind of a housekeeping effort here, and that is, we need you to authorize and award the contract to KG Manufacturing. We weren't necessarily required to get the three quotes under the emergency procurement rules, but if we could, we're encouraged to, and we were able to do that. So I feel that we've got some good bids. What we're asking for is you to authorize a city manager to enter into a contract with KG Manufacturing for the amount specified plus 15% contingency so that the total cost does not exceed $145,295.74.
All right, is there any questions from the agency?
One question. One of my employees today asked me if the change is being made to the Empire Boat Ramp will make it ADA accessible. I don't know if it is or not. I've never been there.
The, no, it won't.
Okay.
Not the floats themselves. They will not.
But the dock itself?
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not going to do anything to the ramp itself. Just the floats.
Cool.
The floats are in the water.
That's correct.
Yep.
And they move independently, and so they're probably not safe for...
No, probably not.
For certain folks.
Are you anticipating that the contingency might need to be used on this project?
It could be that we, depends on what we find when they go to actually place the floats. So that's the challenge, because we don't know what we might find. And another thing I didn't share is that we expect these floats to be installed probably in September.
Any other questions?
By the end of September, was that?
Yes.
By the end of September. I'm wondering if there's any way to, if there's any grant opportunities. I mean, right now, we got to get this done, but I wonder if Randy has any idea of any ODFW grant opportunities?
We'll be looking for grants to replace additional floats there and at the Empire Boat Ramp and at the East Side Boat Ramp as well.
Okay, because, I mean, this would be, I would imagine, a great matching part of a bond applicant, or grant application, so throwing it out there.
So this has already been approved by the agency. This is more of a housekeeping to put the contractor on?
That's correct.
That was my question, actually. When we first discussed this, we had some estimates on cost. Does this bid fall into those estimates?
Because we had asked for spending authority of up to $140,000, and so with the 15% contingency, we're at 145.
All right, any further questions or comments? Then what action would you like to take?
I move that we authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with KG Manufacturing in the amount of $126,344.12 plus 15% contingency with the total cost not to exceed $145,295.74.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and several seconds to authorize the city manager to enter into the contract with KG Manufacturing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And our next item is the executive session.
So, yeah, so we're going to have to move into executive session, so unfortunately, that'll just limit those in the room to just the council and staff.
So the meeting will close to the... Thank you for coming.
ORS 192.6602E for the purpose of discussing real property negotiations. If the Urban Renewal Agency intends to come out of executive session to take final action, the presiding officer should announce when the open session will begin again. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions may be made in executive session.